I appreciate all you're doing. We'll, we'll, we'll take it slow.
Hey, how are you? Thank you for making it.
Good day today. Round everywhere.
Well, I appreciate you. So far, it's you, myself, and Vice Chair O'Neill. So between now and hearing an action, we gotta get a few more.
Let's see if people drop out.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Planning Commission briefing for November 18, 2025. I'm going to do a sound check for Commissioners online. Looks like Commissioner O'Neill is there, and then Commissioner Wu and myself. Good afternoon to all of you. We have one item up today for briefing, and it is as follows. I'm going to read it through. Please note that, again, this is briefing, so we will hear the item before us for briefing, and then there will not be public testimony, but Commissioners can ask questions and comment. So under briefing, Agenda Item A is Council Bill 2025-2385. This is the zoning text amendment regarding waste transfer stations, and this is citywide. Presenting this afternoon is Mr. Fraker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I will read in the staff report and then turn it over to the councilwoman for presentation on this.
Thank you.
Council Bill 2025-2385, to add a definition and use standards for a waste transfer station, was referred to the Planning Commission on October 22 for report and recommendation. Per 922.05 of the zoning code, the Planning Commission shall act to recommend approval or denial of the application within 90 days, which puts that at January 20, 2026. Prior to introduction of the legislation, staff worked with Councilwoman Warwick's office on potential language to the new use. This research was conducted in September and October of 2025. The research looked at existing city policies, state requirements for transfer station uses, and how other jurisdictions regulate the use. The research is summarized within your report. The city developed a report called Roadmap to Zero Waste in 2017 that, among other measures to decrease waste, outlines the need for the city to have its own waste transfer station. The report notes that trash is currently hauled up to 34 miles away for each, after each truck is filled, leading to inefficiencies. As one of the potential action items, the Roadmap to Zero Waste report states that transfer station ownership could be private-public or a public-private partnership. As part of the city's ongoing comprehensive plan efforts, discussions have been held noting the need for a transfer station. City staff researched how other jurisdictions define a waste transfer station use. Please see Attachment 1 for a summary of those definitions. As part of the proposed legislation, staff are recommending a modification to the language of the definition to mention that a waste transfer station use would exclude recycling facilities and other uses intended to remove and/or reuse material from the solid waste stream. The report that you previously had was modified very recently, and that should include the new, the new language. So that is within, within the folder online that you have access to. I will go ahead and read that new definition. So the new definition would be, "Waste transfer station means a supplemental transportation facility used as an adjunct to solid waste root collection vehicles for the primary purpose of moving the solid waste from the collection vehicles to other vehicles for further transfer. This use excludes recycling facilities and other uses intended to remove and/or reuse material from the solid waste stream." Waste transfer stations are regulated by the State Department of Environmental Protection. These regulations include citing requirements such as distances from nearby uses, property boundaries, wetlands, and floodplains, and requirements for operational plans, including soil and groundwater monitoring and nuisance and litter control. A summary of the state requirements is in Attachment 2 of your report. The proposed legislation includes a 500-foot buffer requirement around residential and commercial zoning districts, as well as schools and parks, where waste transfer station use would not be permitted. Please see Attachment 3 for maps of the 500-foot buffer areas. In discussion, in discussion with the councilwoman, it was clarified that Use Standard 3 should reference uses and zoning districts. Staff have proposed a modification to that language as well, and that has been modified in that same report. City staff looked at requirements from other jurisdictions and states as precedent for the 500-foot buffer. See Attachment 4 and 5 for states and jurisdictions with areas with specific buffer requirements noted. City staff consulted additional use standards from other jurisdictions. The city also looked at jurisdictions that have built new and more modern transfer stations and how those transfer stations are incorporated within the built environment. A model of, an example of the Seattle North Transfer Station is included in Attachment 7. Notice of Council Bill 2025-2385 was emailed out on November 10 and posted on the city planning webpage. With that, I will turn it over to the applicant team for their introduction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, as always, to the city planning team, the zoning team. I always appreciate their assistance. It's not a good idea to write zoning legislation without the help of professionals, I don't think. So I'm always happy to, for their guidance. So very much appreciate that. So, yeah, so this bill to, you know, define what a waste transfer station is and then set standards for that in the city of Pittsburgh. This is just the language of the legislation, and to note that the, the recommended adjustments to, to exclude recycling facilities that are for, you know, whether that be paper, whatever, food, waste, et cetera, right, recycling facilities. All right. All right. So sort of where the discussion is now with regard to waste trans, you know, waste transport and waste transfer stations in the city of Pittsburgh. So currently, we do not have a municipal solid waste transfer station operating in the city of Pittsburgh. And environment, as we've heard, environmental service drivers, you know, we're driving our garbage trucks, they have to drive the non-recyclable municipal waste directly to the landfill, which is, I believe, an imperial about 20 miles away. That puts a strain on our environmental service vehicles, and it takes time from those vehicles away from, you know, time that they could be picking up, you know, picking up trash from residents. So, you know, the issue is that the city could benefit from having a waste transfer station so that our environmental services trucks do not have to travel as far to, to unload. But right now, there is no plan or guidance on where such a facility would go in the city and, you know, within the city. So with that in mind, that is why this bill is being brought today. It is critical that the city find ways to meet its need for operational efficiency, but meeting those needs should not have negative impacts on the health and well-being of residents. So this, these are just some pictures of landfills and the types of containers that are brought to the landfills, right, from presumably a, a waste transfer station. Right. So these are very large containers full of municipal waste that, you know, in these facilities are sitting in these facilities getting filled up, right? So, so that's just to understand that this is, you know, this is what we're talking about, housing and then, you know, transporting to and from such a facility and the type of waste that's in there, right, is not recycling material, but just non-recyclables. So here's the city map of where, so the blue is the border of like residential, commercial, the places where, right, you, you, we wouldn't have one of these stations. And then the pink is where you could, and the overlap is where that 500, would be where the restriction on that, on that buffer, right, to make sure that those stations are not, not close to, to residents and businesses, right? Parks, schools, that type of thing, where, where people are living. So that's just to make it clear where in the city we could potentially put one of these stations should we ever decide to do it. So the community impact of large-scale waste transfer stations, right? Excessive trash and litter from trucks coming back and forth, right? You know, waste blowing off trucks, light pollution from large-scale facilities, noise pollution from increased traffic, including large trucks and very loud equipment, air pollution from trucks, and odor from, from the waste being stored at the waste transportation, and of course rodents, roaches, other, other pests, right, that, that naturally are drawn to lots of, to places where lots of waste is there. So at any rate, you know, short and sweet, you know, it's our job as a city to find solutions to our logistical and environmental challenges, but those solutions should not harm our residents. So a waste transfer station may be necessary, but we should be, we as a city should be proactive about determining where such a facility could be safely located, rather than just simply allowing the private market to make that determination based on whatever works best for any one company or operator's bottom line. And so that is why this bill is being introduced, and that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions, should the Commissioners have any.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. Again, at this time, there's no public testimony, but Commissioners get a chance to ask questions. I'm only giving a little chuckle here because there's like three of us here at the moment. Commissioner Vice Chair O'Neill is online. No, my apologies. I take that back. Commissioner Blackwell is here as well, so Commissioners will open the floor for questions and some dialogue or comment. Is there any? Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you to the councilwoman for the bill and for coordinating with city planning. I do appreciate their comments, and I, I think this is, you know, well thought out. I did just want to get a few comments on the record. I was comparing this use, you know, as it's currently written to what we already have in the zoning code, and it is, you know, something that the city needs and we need to be regulating. I just had a few questions about consistency. This is very similar to some of the other uses we have in the zoning code and looking at the use table, specifically the hazardous operations, incinerators, and salvage yards, which are, you know, limited to these GI and RIV GI districts. And those hazardous operations and incinerators are, you know, also conditional uses that would go through the same process. They don't all have aligned standards, even though they're dealing with kind of similar things. And I was just wondering how you came to the 500-foot buffer for those uses.
Yeah, so, well, there is, as, as you are aware, right, there is a neighborhood in my district that has, has a recycling facility, right, which is not a waste transfer station, but that facility is extremely close to homes, and I don't know how that came to be, right? I don't know how that came to be allowed, that such a facility would be so close to, to homes and businesses, but I do know that the result of that is, you know, it's in a GI. The result has been extremely detrimental to the community. So it seemed to me that we do have in Pittsburgh homes and businesses that abut the GI districts, not in every location, but in many locations. And of course, often the, the residents in those communities are lower income, right? That's just sort of the nature of, of where we put things like that, unfortunately. And so that was the intention with the buffer was, you know, look, if it were up to me, I would have put a 1,500-foot buffer, but, you know, with the understanding that we do need spaces where we could potentially have a facility like this, it seemed that at least a, a minimal buffer to protect residents from really the worst effects of such a facility.
Might we be able to pull up the map again, please?
Yeah.
And thank you.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's helpful. For example, the hazardous operations has a 300-foot buffer, but it is applicable to many more uses. Some of these other uses don't have a buffer, but they have a different process. When you're speaking about this specific area with the recycling, was there any thought to also changing the recycling collection use to limit it to these two districts? Right now, it's permitted in, I think, the RIV as a special, I'm sorry, I wrote this down. It's permitted by right in certain districts and as a special exception, but not as a conditional use.
That had not occurred to me, but it's certainly something that I'd be open to exploring.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just, since that's kind of the use that we're looking at, but I, I think this is helpful because it is something that, like you pointed out in your presentation, is helpful for the operations of the city and allows the, you know, waste management to more efficiently collect. So thank you for the, the information in the background and for coordinating with city planning.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I was looking at some of the attachments that you included with the report, and I just wanted to, you know, kind of see, you know, what your thought process was with the, so the, the state has buffer requirements, right, that are standards from transfer stations to residential areas of, what, 300, I believe, 300 feet? And then some of the definitions, you know, do include recycling from some of the other communities like Harrisburg and Erie. What, I guess, what is the, in your mind, or anyone you've talked to, the difference between the impacts of a solid waste transfer facility versus, you know, that only handles solid waste versus somewhere that handles recycling? And, you know, was the 500 number, was that, I guess, was that intended to go beyond the state requirement, or was that just something that you kind of, you know, thought was a good number?
Yeah, so with regard to the, to the recycling facility that is in my district, that facility, and as I said, this facility has caused immense harm to the community over the years. Back in, I want to say 2018, the state issued a permit to that facility to be, you know, to, to be used as a municipal solid waste transfer station. And given the amount of, given the impact of that facility as is, as a recycling station, you know, the difference between the two, I can only just sort of use my assumption, right, of if you're talking about cardboard, plastic, paper, you know, when it comes to sort of attracting rodents and smell and that kind of thing, that, that would not be as bad as regular raw garbage, just kind of similar when you put your house garbage out, right? Like, the, the regular garbage is always a little stinkier and nastier than the, than the recycling. You know, given the smell and, you know, and the, the problem with rodents and such with the recycling, it struck me that, and I don't know what, I, I really can't, it, it, I'm very surprised that the state, that the DEP, you know, looked at the existing recycling facility and thought, oh, yeah, that would be fine, you know, that would be fine to permit as a municipal solid waste transfer station, but I have no, you know, I have no jurisdiction over, over what the state decides to do. So that is why the, the, the larger buffer.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Blackwell? Do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. One of the clarifications that I, I wanted to make with this transfer station is that the intent is that things would go there and be gone in the same day, right? I mean, when, when, I, I mean, ideally, it goes and it's in a receptacle and it gets sent there, and then somebody else comes and gets it. It just makes the trip for the city significantly for, for our people to not have to travel quite as far and to be able to have more manpower and ability in the interim.
Correct.
Right.
Not as much mileage on the trucks and, right, right.
Got it. And just wanted to make sure that that was clear, not just for myself, because I get it, but make sure it was kind of clear for everybody else generally. Okay, well, given that's it, it looks like you can conclude. We'll close up for today. Thank you very much, and we'll see you soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good rest of your day, and at this point, it looks like that's the only Agenda item for briefing, and we will see everybody brief intermission. It's a little longer than most, but about 30 minutes, we'll see everybody at 2:00. Thank you. Kate was down for the rescue. She got me my set of eyes. Kate, you're an angel.
Thank you. Where, where?
In my car.
Oh. You dropped them in the street or something.
Yeah.
We're about one minute out. And the room continues to fill. How are you today, sir? Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Dick, we do. It's two o'clock and the room seems to be filling here. So I'm going to give a couple of minutes for folks to come on in. And then after everybody comes on in and can take a seat. And I know that there's a little bit kind of going on. There's some moving parts to get enough chairs. Then I'll go ahead and start so it's nice and quiet in the room so that we can all hear. As I know commissioners that are online aren't able to see what's kind of going on in the room. Hold just a moment, please, and thank you. Do we have enough seating back there for everybody? Just in case folks coming in don't see seats back there. There's a row of seats up here in front, maybe five seats. And then maybe one or two scattered within. Thank you, thank you, welcome. Hey, so it looks like most people are in. If anybody's coming in after, I'm just going to go ahead and get started because we're 2:01 here. And we're due to get back online at two o'clock. Just for some housekeeping, commissioners, I do see you online to our court reporter. Hello, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Fantastic, thank you very much for being here. Okay, so good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission. This is the hearing and action portion of our November 18, 2025 session. So I'm going to go ahead and get started with a sound check from our commissioners. Just to make sure everyone's here, I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Gammy. Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantoni, he'll be here at some point, and Commissioner Wu. Thank you so much. Okay, now that we've done roll call, I am going to go through today's agenda for November 18, 2025. And it is as follows. Agenda item A is approval of minutes. Agenda item B is correspondence. Agenda item C is hearing and action. Under hearing and action, we have three items before us today. Agenda item E is the director's report. I'm going to go back to agenda item A, which is approval of minutes. Commissioners, you had before you minutes for October 21, 2025. If there are any edits, please state. If there are none, do I have a motion from the floor to approve?
Some moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. I'll do roll call, Commissioner Blackwell. Aye. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you. So we have a second set of minutes from November 4. You've been in receipt of, if there are no edits, do I have a motion from the floor to approve?
Some moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. I'll do roll call, Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk. Aye, Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are moving to agenda item B, which is correspondence. For correspondence, on November 18, 2025, we are in receipt of correspondence regarding item BDA-2025-01290 for 121st Street. Correspondence from Jeff Campbell, Strip District Neighbors. We're also in course, in receipt of correspondence from Gavin White of Riverlife. Regarding item DCP-MPZC-2025-00195, Council Bill 2025-1993. For Hazelwood, we're in receipt of correspondence from the following. Pastor Patricia Stowers, Congregation of Morning Star Baptist Church. John Harding. Haley Steinhauser. Diane Shank. From The Market. Jenna Floor. Krista Jones, Greenfield Community Association. Samuel Simon, Allegheny Valley Railroad. Regarding item DCP-MPZC-2025-00230, Council Bill 2024-0959. North Shore, we are in receipt of correspondence from the following. Linda McNair. Allison Rupert. Paul Brown. Linda Schmidt. Gail Marcus. Robert Fenhagen. Tim Ivors. Robert Buncher. Julie, and if I don't say this right, my apologies. Esolia. Mary Jo Noch. Leslie Forrester. Carolyn Biglow. Kay Danowski. Patrick Frank. Carol Stanton. Virginia Cassiano. John Harbor. Daniel Salmon. Kathleen Nicholas. Elise Ford. Gail Newstadt. Allison Yaskel. Susan King. Regina Brooks. And Kathy Erdnall. Rob Conroy. Doreen Perry. Jill Diskin. Gail Amshell. Dolores Fur. Ronnie Tenner. Nepa. Majumdar. Lynette Ridners. A.J. Cho. Patsy Helbridge. Merrill Pink. Shannon Bierman. Roberta Corona. Nancy Levine. Sarah Fowas. Cosette Cornelius Bates. John Cisco. Elena Marchetti. Mike McCampbell. Susan Donan. Jessica Brown. Marcia Stoner. John Nelson. Cheryl Towers. R.A. Dayton. Edward Jawisk. Jasiewicz. Karen Sturgeon. Mark Fenwick. Keith Lance. Rosemary Callenberg. Craig Kahn. Ellen Mazo. Nick Crozzy. Russell Walker. Adrian Johnson. Suzanne Smolin. Sean Brady. And Candace Kane. Nice long list, if any names were mispronounced, my apologies now. Okay, moving on to agenda item C, which is hearing and action. Under hearing and action, we have three items. I'll read them all, and then we'll go to the first one and then let that applicant come up. Under hearing and action, item number one is BDA-2025-01290 at 121st Street. This is construction of two mixed-use buildings. Item number two, DCP-MPZC-2025-00230, Council Bill 2024-0959. This is a zoning text amendment for signs in the North Shore Entertainment District. Item number three, DCP-MPZC-2025-00195, Council Bill 2025-1993. This is continued from September 23rd and October 7th. This is a zoning map amendment for the Hazelwood Riv GI District. Moving back to item number one. BDA-2025-01290, 121st Street. Construction of two mixed-use buildings in the Strip District Neighborhood. Mr. Consila, please present.
Thank you, Chair Vernon Falk. This is a project development plan application, BDA-2025-01290. Thus followed by Indovina Associates Architects on behalf of Midwood Investments and Development, the property owner for the construction of two new mixed-use buildings in the Strip District Neighborhood. The buildings will contain a combined total of 464 dwelling units, 37,000 square feet of ground-level retail spaces, and improvements around the multi-use trail that is located to the rear of the property. Per section 905.04.c3 of the zoning code, the planning commission shall review and approve as a project development plan all new construction of 15,000 square feet or more in gross floor area within the Riv IMU District. This project is located within the Riv IMU. It is located at the corner of 21st Street and Railroad Street. The site is bordered by the multi-use trail to the rear, a six-story multi-unit residential building to the eastern side of the property, um, and then, uh, 21st Street on the, on the west side of the property. The development site includes two parcels that are to be consolidated. The parcels are currently occupied by a one-story warehouse building. The law consolidation was approved on October 21st, 2025. The project site is located within the floodplain overlay district. That floodplain permit has been submitted and is currently under review by the permanent of permits, license, and inspections. In the Riv IMU District, at least 60% of the building frontage must be located within the build-two zone, which is imposed from 0 feet to 10 feet inward of the property line. The proposed building frontage complies with the build-two zone requirement. The applicant is proposing one building, or Building A, that is, uh, 65 feet, and a second building, Building B, that is, uh, 85 feet in building height. The Riv IMU zoning district imposes a 10-foot step back at 65 feet in building height for buildings exceeding 65 feet in height. Uh, so on Building B, or the second, or Building Two, the applicant is proposing that 10-foot step back. The applicant is required to seek eight performance points. Three, uh, for the additional building height to go up to 85 feet. Three, uh, points to, uh, encroach, or to reduce the riparian buffer setback by 30 feet, and also to encroach within that riparian buffer. In order to achieve those points, the applicant is utilizing the following bonus points. They are proposing to improve and widen the shared use path to city standards. That's worth one point. Uh, two points for providing an onsite public restroom that will be accessible, uh, to the riverfront trail users during normal, uh, expected hours. Uh, one point for providing public access between the two buildings from the riverfront and railroad street. Uh, two points for urban fabric, as the applicant is intending to design the structured parking to allow for the conversion to other uses. And two points, uh, for the ground floor retail space of Building One that is intended to be utilized as a fresh food market. Um, section 905.04.e4 provides regulations about the placements of structures within the riparian zone buffer. So as mentioned before, uh, the applicant is seeking to go 30 feet, uh, reduce that buffer by 30 feet. The typical requirement is 125 feet from the project pool elevation. This would reduce that zone to 95 feet. Um, additionally, the applicant, uh, is allowed to encroach further into that buffer when certain conditions are met. Those conditions are outlined in 905.04.e41c, and the applicant is complying with those conditions. The project includes integral parking garage spaces within the two buildings for a total of 344 parking spaces. This is in compliance with the parking requirements of Chapter 914. The applicant is also compliant with the bicycle parking requirements of Chapter 914. The applicant also complies with the landscape and screening requirements. Those are located in Chapter 918. The applicant is providing 10-foot sidewalks along 21st Street and Railroad in compliance with the Riv requirements. This project was reviewed by the Contextual Design Advisory Panel, or SEEDAP. The panel was in favor of the design of the two buildings with the proposed use of the materials that create a cohesive and refrained design. The applicant, or the panel recommended further emphasis on the access areas to the riverfront trail with a focus on pedestrian safety. The summary report of the SEEDAP meeting is attached to the report submitted to commissioners. There is no registered community organization in the Strip District Neighborhood, and no development activities meeting was required. The applicant is also, uh, compliant with the requirement for six off-street loading spaces, and those are located between the two buildings, within the two buildings. Uh, the planning commission shall review a project development plan under the criteria 922.10.e2. That criteria is listed in the report submitted to commissioners. And the recommended motion by city planning staff is that the planning commission approve the project development plan, thus filed by Indovina Architects on behalf of the property owners, with the conditions that the final condition plan, construction plans, including site plans and elevations, be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to receiving final zoning approval. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team.
And before the and quickly, oh, sorry. Hi, before the applicant team starts, I just wanted to note that I'll be recusing on this application.
Thank you, Vice Chair O'Neil.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Sitig, S-I-T-T-I-G. And I'm representing the applicant. Uh, Midwood Investment and Development with me today, and will handle the presenting, will be primarily Ryan Indovina. But Rob Indovina and Marty, uh, Bussler from Ryan Indovina Associates, uh, Indovina Associates Architects are here today. Also, uh, virtually is Scott Hayner. He's the Senior Vice President of Development for Midwood, and he's, you know, essentially running the project. Um, just to provide a little context, the highlighted area on the sheet that's up, um, indicates the existing use. It's consumer produce. As you can see, it extends on the left from 21st Street over to the Helm Building. That was the Oxford Project that the Planning Commission reviewed not all that long ago. And then on the right side of, uh, Helm is 23rd. So it does extend across, you know, an entire, what's a large city block there. Uh, there's an extensive community process, although, as Mr. Consila noted, there's no RCO dam requirement. There were extensive meetings. Uh, one of the outcroppings of that meetings, uh, initially, um, despite a lot of informal ones, the first sort of organized one was there was, uh, Representative McCaffrey for the Brickworks Development was there. And that's the first time, I think, we really saw the plans, and they had a, an access corridor going through. Now, that site is just to the bottom of the site, to the south, which is the parking lot now. And so what we were able to do is coordinate with Brickworks. There's going to be a visual corridor through their site, and now we're going to what initially was a single building, which was going to effectively block that 22nd Street. Uh, Midwood, um, as a result of encouragement of the design, as you'll see, there are two buildings. And they're actually of differing heights, too. So it'll provide some context, and Ryan will show, uh, what's really happening with that context and on the riverfront. But the exciting part is that you break down the massing, and you're, you're opening another access to, to the river. So, um, in addition to the trail riverfront improvements, we're actually, um, providing a separate new access. We indicate it's gonna be a public easement. We are going to let people know, unlike a lot of these situations, it's gonna be in the midst of our residents, and, you know, the overnight is going to be closed just for safety concerns. So, uh, for all intents and purposes, it's gonna be full-time public access. There's not any reason anybody would be back there at that time. We've also coordinated with the owner of the marina. I don't think they're represented here today, but there was a coordination, um, you know, some property clearance. We're trying to, uh, hopefully this will be an advantage for, uh, the viability and, and ongoing improvements to the marina also. So it's an exciting, as you can see from the riverfront, it's a very special piece of property. Um, heavy-duty industrial now, and it's going to, you know, change this section of the Strip District, uh, for the positive. Uh, wanted to mention, as Mr. Consila noted, I think indirectly, zero zoning relief. We didn't require any variances. It meets everything. We're not asking for any waivers or in modifications. We're meeting everything with the bonus points. And, um, the other part is that we're, you know, bringing a grocer into the neighborhood. The expectation is, um, with this project, which, um, again, is gonna help make the Strip District become more of a livable neighborhood over time. So, um, we're all been working hard. These guys specifically with Mr. Hayner have been working hard to get here today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Good afternoon. Uh, Ryan Indovina, Indovina Associate Architects. It's I-N-D-O-V-I-N-A. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I'm excited to present the project to everybody here. Uh, as Mr. Sitig mentioned, uh, the image here indicates the existing site, which is entirely, um, covered by a single-story consumer produce structure, uh, with a large vehicular access off of Railroad Street. Uh, the site is bordered to the southwest by 21st, by Railroad Street to the southeast. The helm to the northeast, and then to the northwest is, uh, is a marina. Very unique condition, particularly along this portion of the Strip District, where we actually have a use within the river. Uh, so exciting to, uh, improve the trail as part of that, part of this development, uh, and allow that, um, that marina space to be more, uh, you know, conducively used as part of the trail experience, as well as the general public experience. Just a couple, uh, contextual images here to share with everybody. In the upper-left corner, uh, is the existing structure to the left. This is standing at 21st and Railroad. Uh, at present, the entirety of this site on its southwest border is, um, blocked from Railroad by an active railroad line. Uh, that will be removed as part of this development, uh, as that rail line actually services this, this site only. Um, in the upper-right corner is a view looking back towards downtown along Railroad. You see the subject site in the sort of right-hand side, uh, with the white structure there. Uh, in the lower-left and lower-right, uh, we have views on both sides of the existing trail. Uh, so this is on the riverside at 23rd, uh, sorry, excuse me, 22nd or 21st, uh, in the lower-left, and then on, uh, 23rd on the, uh, lower-right. So the site is located in the Riv IMU. Uh, it's basically the borderline between the SP8 District, which governed the former Buncher properties, uh, which have now been essentially fully developed on this side of the 16th Street Bridge, uh, and extends further up, uh, into this rest of the Strip District. Uh, this particular, uh, site actually has a much higher height limitation on it. And as Bill mentioned, we've gone through a couple iterations in the beginning of the project, uh, and ultimately landed where we are today. Okay, there we go. So within the riverfront, uh, mixed-use, uh, sub-district, uh, there are no setback requirements. As you'll see, as we go through the presentation, we are, uh, providing setbacks as the building extends above its ground and second, second floors, uh, to allow for, uh, our neighbors to have a reasonable experience, the northeast, as well as the, uh, users of this building, uh, to feel more like a street separation, uh, between the buildings, the residential portions of the buildings, uh, rather than having them at a zero setback. The base height, uh, in this district is 60. The maximum height is actually 150. Um, so it's pretty high. Uh, we are, as was mentioned in the beginning, limiting Building A to 65 feet and Building B to 85 feet. So certainly not achieving that, that, uh, maximum height there. Uh, the bonus points, as were mentioned, uh, we're taking a bunch of bonus points from different categories. Uh, we're in compliance with all those points, and I'll point out the various components of those, uh, how we're achieving those as we go through the presentation. Uh, the project, um, from a parking standpoint, again, achieves our parking requirements. Um, we have, uh, the riverfront zoning district permits a 50% reduction. We're in, and surplus of that reduction, uh, we are in compliance with bicycle, bicycle parking, uh, both internal and external, and we are in compliance with the required off-street loading. As you'll see in the plans, uh, we have loading for both the residential uses, as well as much larger-scale loading for our retail space. Um, this just, uh, excerpts from the zoning, uh, code, particularly as it relates to the riparian buffer. I'll go through this more graphically than reading any of this stuff, but, uh, we are in compliance with these sections. Um, similarly, the build-two, uh, pedestrian sidewalk zones, as mentioned, uh, currently the site does not have any sidewalks, uh, on both Railroad and 21st. So we are providing, uh, very large, wide, uh, and pedestrian-friendly sidewalks to link to the adjacent Helm site, uh, which actually deadends into the site, uh, and then allowing that to wrap around 21st. Similarly, as Bill mentioned, we are providing the visual access corridor. Um, so the intent of that zoning, uh, code is really to extend, uh, existing street conditions through all the way to the, to the river where possible. Um, 22nd actually stops at Smallman today, uh, so we're, Brickworks are extending it from Smallman to Railroad, and we are extending it from Railroad to the river. Uh, solar study, uh, this building is located essentially on the northwest side of, of the Strip here, so has very limited, uh, solar impact, uh, during the, um, various portions of the year. Uh, it's really providing most of its shade on the, uh, on the riverside. Got a little delay here. Try that again. There we go. Um, so worst case, as always, December, um, we're providing the majority of the shading onto, uh, onto the river, uh, in the morning, throughout the afternoon, and sort of worst case in the afternoon, uh, will have some impact on the helm. Uh, but as with any, uh, large-scale building that has, uh, impact on its neighbors, uh, that's really the worst-case condition. This is the existing site plan, so we'll shift over into the planning here to give everybody a sense of the layout of the site. So, uh, Railroad Street is on the bottom of the page, uh, 21st on the left, and then the helm, which is the large white box on the right-hand side, is the existing structure that sits there today. The dash line indicates the existing structure, uh, that will be removed in its entirety. And then at the top of the page is the existing, uh, marina, which is actually situated, uh, quite a few feet below the elevation of this, this, uh, this site. So there's kind of a, a, a steep grade condition between the trail as it extends down to the marina. Um, so, you know, I really don't see the, uh, marina from this, uh, vantage point, uh, but it is very impactful as, as we go through the zoning, uh, implications here. Um, our proposed building, uh, footprints here are indicated in gray. Uh, the main, uh, priority or the main focus of our riparian relief is to align ourselves with the, uh, neighboring, the neighboring parcel, both the Cork Factory and the Helm. Uh, so we're not prog- pushing our building any further to the northwest than those existing structures. However, the riparian buffer requires that we, uh, go through that process to get the additional points. So, uh, this red line outlines that existing 125-foot setback. This is a unique site in the sense that that setback is typically defined by roughly the edge of the, the water. Um, in this case, that is projecting out into the river as a result of the constructed, uh, marina area. So you kind of get this hat-shaped, uh, setback condition. So that's the baseline. We then are requesting points for 95 foot, so a 30-foot reduction in that. That's the yellow line. Um, and then we have a further, um, setback, which essentially aligns ourselves with the helm, and that's our, uh, further point relief. So essentially, we're only, um, impacting the setback conditions in both the upper-left and upper-right corners of our site. Uh, again, due to the unique conditions of the, uh, other river as it sits on the, uh, the northwest side of our site. Let's go here. Okay, there we go. Uh, as was mentioned, the building is within the flood, floodplain. So the light blue area is the floodplain. The dark blue is the floodway. Uh, the building has been designed to, uh, not impact or be constructed in any way within the floodway. Uh, uh, once it's constructed in the floodplain, we are subject to the requirements, uh, in the city's flood code, which are our floodplain code, which we are abiding by, and we will work through that, uh, as the project continues. So shifting to the section of the building, uh, this is cut through the railroad side of the building, so you get a sense of what happens above the ground level. So, uh, the areas indicated in kind of a pink color, uh, are our parking areas. The purple are residential, and then the yellow are the multifamily residential sitting above. So Building A on the left side, Building B on the right. Building A, again, maximized at 65 feet. There are four stories of residential on a two-story plinth. Building B is five stories of residential on a three, essentially a two-and-a-half-story plinth. Uh, I'll go through how our parking works here in a second. Um, but we are, uh, providing all of our residential above that floodplain, as mentioned, uh, as well as the majority of our habitable space. Shifting over to a section, um, going lengthwise, so this is the river on the left, Railroad on the right. Uh, as was mentioned, we're proposing to do a large-scale grocer on the ground floor of Building A. That's indicated here in green. Uh, so that'll occupy effectively a double-height space with our parking levels, two parking levels within that same section, as well as two levels of multifamily townhouse structures that situate along the river, uh, to create, uh, a, a buffer and a scale reduction, uh, for the, for the trail side, and then we'll have a residential units above. Uh, shifting over to Building B, somewhat similar. In this case, we have a double-height retail space. Um, a building lobby behind that, and actually another level of parking that is situated above of the retail. Uh, but otherwise, the residential sits above that plinth with then the same townhouse structures situated on the riverside. Shifting over to our proposed site plan. So this is our landscape plan. Again, orienting everybody, Railroad on the bottom, uh, 21st Street on the left. Uh, we have, uh, introduced, uh, significant sidewalks along Railroad and 21st. Starting at the right, lower-right corner of the site, uh, we are matching the helm sidewalk as it sits today. That'll be at the same grade elevation, and our retail space on that Building B will at, will be at grade. Uh, as you get to the visual access corridor, uh, penetration between the two buildings or through the site, uh, that is aligned with our neighbors, uh, to the south of this page, uh, the Brickworks. So we worked with, um, both Domi and the, the McCaffrey folks to provide a pedestrian crosswalk that aligns on both sides of the site to allow people to cross through, uh, and utilize that, uh, that safe condition there. As you extend in front of Building A's retail space, uh, because it's a large-scale, um, grocer space, we've actually raised the entirety of that retail space to the, uh, reference flood elevation. So as a result, we'll have a, a slightly elevated sidewalk on that side of the site, combined with a sidewalk at grade. Uh, that'll be, um, accessible That'll be accessible multiple locations along the length of building A via stairs and the ADA compliant ramps. That'll provide direct access to the to the to the retail space, as well as providing parallel parking spaces along railroad in both sections. As we wrap around 21st, that sidewalk condition will continue, quite a large sidewalk all the way out to 21st. It'll be then broken by the large scale loading space that's kind of mid block as well as the entrance into the retail dedicated parking at ground level. And then as you get to the riverside, we would have the entire length of the building, both A and B lined with residential townhouses with small sort of enclosed private yards, as well as an elevated portion of trail or plinth that then steps down to the improved trail that is between our site and the railroad. Oh, sorry, not the railroad, the Marina. We do not control that portion of the site that actually is owned by the Marina, but we've had conversations with them to be able to improve it as is necessary to make that a nice link between the condition that occurs at the Cork and Helm side, as well as at the edge 1909 site across 21st. For the visual access corridor, that actually is a vehicular access centrally located that provides direct access to the building's lobbies. So the residential lobbies are actually accessed via that sort of hexagonal space in the middle or octagonal space in the middle. That then transitions basically midway through the parcel into a pedestrian walkway, which is lined on both sides by residential units, two story townhouses. So again, that that space is really dedicated strictly for the residents in terms of their vehicular access. Otherwise, it's open to the public to pass from the railroad street all the way to the to the riverside. We have, as was mentioned, pursued the landscape requirements here and in compliance with that, providing street trees along both streets, as well as providing extensive landscaping in the pass through as well as on the riverside. Okay, shipping. This is a site plan indicating the accessibility of the of the site at the ground level. So all areas of the building, both retail spaces are provided with multiple multiple accessible entrances. The building lobbies for the residential are also provided with accessible entrances. And then the entire pathway as it extends from railroad all the way to the riverside are provided with accessible routes via ramps of, you know, ADA compliant ramps to mitigate the grade differential between the proposed billing elevation and the trail. From a accessibility standpoint for the residential units themselves, all building, all units will be built as a type B unit. So a convertible ADA unit and then they'll be will be providing the required type A fully accessible units per code. Just another indication of the plan here, again, just kind of calling out the more functional portions of the plan. The pink colors are retail space fronting all along railroad and wrapping the corner on 21st. Our magen, I guess lavender color that wraps the trail side and then internal to the view corridor are all residential use. And then we have our parking garage spaces in white in the middle of the building. So again, the intent from a design standpoint is to wrap all the non-functional parking areas with functional dynamic use. So it feels a very active site for the for the public. All right, this thing's a little slow here. As we go to the upper floor, level two, that's going to be our double height space for the the retail space. And then we'll have our second floor of parking and second floor of residential townhouses. Should get up, oop, I went backwards. Okay, as you get up to the third floor, that is the first level of residential use on the building A and then the third level of parking for building B. This portion of building A has two courtyards, one internal and the one external with a pool facing the river. So there'll be a large courtyard facing the river to mitigate the scale of the building from the riverside, make it feel a bit more open and read as two towers, which we'll see in a second here. Just extending upward, as you go up in both buildings, they actually set back in the middle of the site. So there's a nice big buffer between the units facing each other across the 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 visual access quarter, as well as the units facing the helm. So we made a concerted effort to make that feel like a street width between the two between the two buildings, rather than being really up against each other. So we've got a good, a nice big buffer there and you can see a little bit better here, the skinniness of particularly building B for the bulk of its length. Some more floor plans as we go up, we'll have a green roof on building A as it extends upward and then similarly on building B. Shifting to materiality, we worked very, very closely with Midwood Design Design Group to identify the aesthetics of the building as well as the materiality. So this is really a tripartite design where we have a solid base comprised of large scale glazed windows and solid full depth brick in a in a black diamond color, essentially a manganese iron spot appearance. The windows will be a dark bronzer black as it shifts to the the rest of the building. The brick changes to a, it's called a Belden claret color. So it's kind of a reddish purple color. That'll be extending for three floors, kind of vertical pilasters that then transitions at the top floor for horizontal band. But essentially all the darker colors you see here are full depth brick. We then accent that brick with high density fiber cement panels in a dark or in light gray that accent the the sort of three story zone on the middle of the building. So I really worked very closely with the design folks from Midwood to create this sort of base spine and cap to the building, particularly on building A, and you'll see a little bit of a variation on building B as we go through that. So shifting here, this is the elevation on railroad of the two buildings. You've got building A on the left, building B on the right. Building A has that that run of three windows vertically for the middle of the building and then sort of a cap on the top. Building B takes the same methodology on the ground floor and then introduces more horizontals to create more of a grid structure or grid aesthetic for the upper floors of the residential. What you're seeing here is the lighter color on building B is the six story portion. And then the remaining two floors are set back quite a bit in plan. So that's what you're reading kind of in the background there. Shifting over to 21st, again, the grocer retail space wraps around about a third of the site. Then we have our vehicular access for loading. And then we have some utility components. And then when we get to the corner at the at the trail side, that's where the residential units begin again with, you know, two story glazing, a very welcoming access point for both the elevated portion of the trail as well as the main trail that we will be improving as part of the project. On the riverside, we have aligned building B roughly with the helm and the Cork Factory to the north. So kind of creating a datum line along the river that then steps down to building A, which I mentioned before, reads as sort of two two towers with a far setback connector piece to sort of mitigate the scale and allow, you know, maximum daylight and sun sunlighting on the on the trail there. Same architectural expression occurs on all the floors and all the sides of the building. This is very visible building, so there's no reduction in quality of material or or alteration in that manner. So all façades will read read equivalently. This is a view from 21st and Railroad, looking at the corner of the grocer here. So again, very high floor to ceiling glazing, really announcing a nice, exciting use along railroad. We would then have the articulation of the of the building above with the lighter colored brick and horizontal banding overlapping with the with the large windows and the sort of continuous band at the top of the building. This is a view sort of through the access corridor, just a little bit more of a three dimensional view of the same elevation presented earlier. Again, same materiality, just reading slightly different between the two buildings to kind of carry that same scale and same expression through the site. This is a little hard to read in the in the view here, but again, that's sort of idea of the typology of the buildings as you extend from the north to the south. We've got the tallest building being the Cork Factory Tower. That then steps down to the helm, that steps equivalently to our building B and then down to building A, which then steps to the District 1909, which is the furthest building on the right hand side of the view. Again, really trying to mitigate the scale of the building on the railroad on the on the riverside, which will be very visible from across the river, from the trail across the river, from 28 across the river, as well as the neighborhoods further to the northwest. And so the last view here is our proposed improvements along the trail side. For those who haven't been there, currently it's essentially a very skinny asphalt pathway right now, which is somewhat overgrown. So that'll be widened significantly to provide a nice wide connection of the trail access. It also provides fire department access to the north side of the site. You then have this transition from the trail elevation to the main elevation of the site, which will be accessed via these grand stairs as well as ramp conditions. It'll be heavily landscaped and again, completely accessible to the public at both elevations. The only sort of mitigating factor would be the the townhouses, which you kind of see in the in the left side of the view will have a little landscape buffer to create almost a private yard to themselves, but that won't be, you know, kind of fully fenced or anything like that. So the idea is to make this feel very public and private and very exciting and sort of conducive to the public use that the trail intends to have. So with that, that is my presentation.
Thank you. If that concludes your presentation, which was very thorough, at this time, we open the floor for public testimony as it relates to this project. I know there are a lot of folks in the room. Good to see you. And there are folks online. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this application? No? Anyone online? All right. So commissioners, it's our our time to dig in here. Commissioner Dick, I see you with the hand raised. So I'll open the floor and welcome Commissioner Cantonia. Commissioner Dick? I'm sorry, you're on mute, so we can't hear you. Give Commissioner Dick just a moment.
Okay, sorry. Okay, you can hear me now?
We can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Two questions. First of all, is the floodway, you're talking about being sort of on the floodway. Are there any provisions if there is increased flooding, which is predicted with continued climate change and heavier rains for more places for the water to go underneath the building in case there were unusual flooding?
So per the per the current flood requirements in the city, we are required to have the majority of the building elevated above the reference flood elevation, which is, I think is about 18 inches above the base floodplain elevation. So we are not required to provide any pass through conditions for the building if the building is elevated that high. So I guess to answer your question, we're not providing any through through conditions, but the building is being built in compliance with the the city's requirements for floodway management.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. That's that's that'll take care of that. Thank you.
That concludes your questions? All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cantonia?
Yes, I, good afternoon. My only question is, do, are you guys also proposing lighting along the trails, the river trail?
We certainly would look at at providing lighting. Right now, we are obviously can control our side of the site. And we had a very productive conversation with with Riverlife and discussing how we can improve the 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 trail in that regard. And we're going to continue that conversation with them to make sure we can provide, you know, the similar similar quality experience that we have both on the Cork Factory and on the district and and edges 1909 sides of the site.
Okay, and you have lighting on the on the core factory, I'd imagine?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Mazza, did you have a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Wu.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wu.
Okay. Can you talk about any sustainability features you may have included in projects? I know you put a green roof on it. Is there any, I guess, any measurements that you've done that, you know, might be related to stormwater or energy reduction or anything like that related to those features?
From the from the the green roof side, certainly, because we're pursuing the, I guess, the city's base stormwater management is rather significant now. Right? So we have both the combination of a green roof assembly for both both roofs as well as below grade storage tanks. So it's a significant capture, rainwater capture as part of that. In terms of the building itself, all the systems, high performance systems, it's effectively a full electric building, right? Rather than a gas run building, we'll be providing gas very minimally to service the retail spaces to service the large scale HVAC equipment, which will in itself be high performance, you know, all this sort of up to date energy code requirements there. But effectively, you know, we're not pursuing anything beyond those levels. But overall, the building with its envelope requirements, you know, high performance materials, long long term, long term, high high quality materials, I think we'll all sort of push in the direction of being a highly sustainable building.
Thank you.
Is that it? Commissioner Mazza?
Thank you. I think it's a great project. Number one, it opens up, you know, the area to get to the river with McCafferty project and this project. And also, everybody always considers the Golden Triangle downtown. I don't understand why we do that. This is four blocks away from, you know, Liberty Avenue or whatever you want to call it. So this includes the whole city of Pittsburgh. So it's actually, you know, we're starting there and I know we're going to continue into the the Golden Triangle District. But I believe this is going to open more things up and I I like your project.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll add some final notes that I was taking while we were going through. I want to thank you first for a very thorough presentation. Work, good work with the community in terms of discussions and landing where you did. I definitely appreciate the attention to detail, the visual analysis or the visuals that you did on site analysis. Great job on the grocer. Overall, a great mixed use project. I really appreciate the space between the buildings, the harmony that you have between the vehicles, the humans, the walkway overall. That was really nice. And the use of color, material texture changes makes the building really interesting, makes people want to invest and engage with the building further and all the way around. Definitely appreciate the use of brick as I feel like it was a real nod to the other historic structures around it. So super classy there. Those are pretty much my final comments. And at this time, if there are no other commissioner comments, Commissioner Dick?
Real quickly, I'm sorry. Do you have a definitive signed commitment from a grocer to fill this space?
I'll jump in there. I'm Scott Hayner from Midwood Investment and Investment. No, we do not have a signed commitment as today. We've been in conversations with several different grocers. So there is definitely high interest, but we have no signed commitments as of today.
Thank you.
All right. So commissioners, at this time, after this presentation and all commission comments, do we have a motion from the floor to approve with the conditions as stated in our report?
Motion to approve with all the conditions stated in the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk. Aye, Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Recused on this one. Commissioner Cantonia?
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day. Great project. All right, we are going to move on to the next agenda item under hearing and action, which is agenda item number two. It is as follows, DCP dash MPZC dash 2025 dash 00230. This is Council Bill 2024 dash 0959. This is a zoning text amendment for signs in the North Shore Entertainment District, North Shore. Presenting is Mr. Lehman. And before you start, I will let you know that I am recusing. So I'll be back when this one's over. I'm going to ask that you move and chair this because I do believe. Vice Chair O'Neil, are you back in for this one?
I am also recusing on this item.
I thought so. Okay, so Vice Chair O'Neil and I will both be recusing. I'm going to pass it over to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commission members, everyone here. This is Council Bill 2024 0959. This was sent to the Planning Commission for report and recommendation recommendation on June 27th. The bill was briefed at Planning Commission on October 7th, 2025. And planning staff outlined a number of concerns about the legislation, about the increase in the amount of signage, changes to regulatory practices and inconsistencies in the ordinance. and inconsistencies in the ordinance regarding, uh, the boundaries. The Planning Commission requested that staff work directly with the applicant to draft a version that would, uh, address the staff's concerns while, uh, still, uh, sort of sticking with the intent of the, of the applicant's bill. Since then, the applicant and staff have worked together collaboratively to address the issues. Uh, I'm gonna jump through a little bit of the report here. Um, I do have a, a presentation as well, and I want to be respectful. I know there's a lot of people here and, um, time is of the essence, so, um, why don't I work through the presentation? And then if there's anything left that we didn't cover, uh, I'll circle back with that, so, um, uh-oh, there we go. Okay. So as I stated, the commission asked us to work collaboratively together on October seventh. So why didn't we pursue a collaborative process? Uh, the previous approaches had been unsuccessful. Uh, this, uh, the applicant's representatives here can attest, uh, I think, uh, going on two decades of, uh, really having sort of two sides opposing, uh, with pretty strong dug-in views. Um, and we needed to try a win-win approach, the benefits of which include maximizing, um, the ability to address as many of everyone's goals as possible, uh, to remove friction and conflict down the road when we actually get to decision-making. Um, it could happen quickly, which, uh, I can say, uh, we were able to do, uh, within a month. Um, and, uh, we did have buy-in and participation from everybody that was involved. Um, that this approach welcomes disagreement instead of avoiding it. And so we got everything out on the table and we worked together. So we did this over three in-person meetings and several other iterations. Uh, through email, uh, the collaborative process was, I facilitated. Uh, we established mutual understanding and shared goals. We identified seven issues and collaborated on solutions. And we worked jointly in a shared document with multiple iterations of red-line revisions. Uh, that version that, uh, is being presented to the commission and to the public has been posted on the city's website. Um, and, uh, on the Planning Commission's website. Uh, we, uh, the, the applicant presented the revised draft to the North Shore stakeholders. And of course, uh, the City Council Office was involved throughout, um, as well as the City Council legislative staff. Um, and here we are. Uh, so I'm not going to read through all of these. Uh, we identified a number of goals that we all had to sort of accept and share. Uh, those ranged from having to happen quickly, uh, to allow for the types and scales of signage allowed in stadium areas in other cities, um, to, uh, you know, ensuring that the, uh, expanded electronic emotion signs would have minimal visual impact on riverfront parks and trails, um, a- and so on. Uh, we identified seven issues that we needed to collaborate on to develop solution, solutions to, to get to a point where we can bring this together to Planning Commission for Recommendation. Those included temporary sign code changes, uh, that would work for the upcoming NFL Draft, uh, a new approach to neighborhood and district gateway signs, impact of the electronic signage on the river, riverfront parks and trails, a new approach to stadium and public destination facility signs for the North Shore, a new approach to ground-mounted signs, and, uh, expansion of electronic and large video displays in the district, and how to deal with changeable content, marketing of off-site events, and sponsorship. The, uh, amended draft, uh, made some changes to definitions, uh, clarified and narrowed sponsorship content by introducing a new definition of district cross-promotion content, which allows the publicizing of events located within the North Shore Entertainment District on or off the premises where the event is promoted for a limited period of time. Uh, but it has language that strictly prohibits advertising otherwise. The revised draft distinguishes between large-scale and small-scale ground signs and upst- updates the standards for regulating these. Uh, the North Shore Garage no longer requires ownership or operation by a local agency. And the sponsor definition, uh, has, adds limits on advertising, allowing on-premise or district-related sponsorship, but not prohibiting general product promotion. I'm sorry, but prohibiting, but it does prohibit general product promotion. For temporary event signs, the revised draft creates two separate categories, major temporary event and minor temporary event, and clarifies content size, location, and approving authorities for each. Uh, sponsorship is limited to thirty percent for all temporary event signs. Major temporary event signs are permitted within the special event area without limitation, uh, and require temporary event sign plan to be submitted for review and approval, uh, with plenty of time to approve it. Minor temporary events are limited and, uh, are prohibited within the floodway and, uh, require, uh, permitting through temporary certificate of occupancy. For public destination facility signs, structured-based signs, um, introduced a size-based tier instead of having a large percent of all of, or having a, using a percentage of all the, uh, combined, uh, aggregated facades. Uh, and so, uh, we allowed smaller signs, uh, closer to grade, have, uh, maximum flexibility. Um, but we prohibit electronic signs from facing towards rivers and trails. Uh, we have limits that, uh, uh, introduce timing and caps brightness back to the city standard. Um, and then we also have a review process for larger signs that come before city planning, uh, as a project development plan. For ground-based signs, the revised draft introduces new size categories as well. Uh, also clarified and adjusted how we calculate sign area for both two-dimensional and three-dimensional signs, uh, and clarified those standards that were easy for staff to, uh, review and administer. The small-scale signs are permitted, uh, at under fifty square, fifty square feet. Large-scale signs, ground signs are permitted, um, but have a spacing requirement. Um, and then the large-scale marquee signs are limited to three per, uh, sub-district, and it's based on the percentage, a percentage of the sub-district aggregate street frontage area. Each individual sign is limited to, uh, twenty-five hundred square feet, but is subject to design review and planning commission approval as a project development plan. Um, and then I think they're further limited in the POP District. Public destination facility signs for large video displays, uh, that was also revised. Um, maintaining, we maintain the twelve hundred square feet and the requirement for conditional use. We reduced, uh, the number to three in the POP District and added stricter placement requirements to ensure displays are not generally parallel to or primarily, primarily visible from rivers, tr- trails and parks. We also clarified the mapping, uh, made sure that the legislation and mapping was consistent. Uh, we created a new definition for neighborhood or district gateway sign. We had a couple of tweaks to what was permit, what was, uh, established there. And I believe that is it, so, um, I think I've covered everything that is in here. Uh, I know the applicants also have a presentation. I want to make time and space for that. Staff is making a positive recommendation and, uh, expresses gratitude to, uh, the applicants for working in this way with us. Thanks.
Uh, good afternoon, Sean Gallagher, uh, on behalf of, um, the North Shore stakeholders, uh, which are listed at the bottom, Rivers Casino, Science Center, PNC Park, Accra Shore, and the War Hall. Uh, also with me is, uh, Bill Quano from Quano Design. He's going to run through our presentation. Um, before we get started, I would like to echo many of Mr. Lehman's comments, and thank you to, uh, Department of City Planning for taking the time. Since we were here during the briefing, we did work through, uh, a number of issues and put in a lot of time to come at a, a workable solution, uh, for everyone, we think. So Bill, if you want to just run through, and I think that we're going to start off going through some of, uh, Mr. Wu's comments and from the last briefing.
Go ahead. The, uh, North Shore is home to twenty million visitors annually, and it really was meant to be, operate like a changeable stage set for the city. And there are events that are happening within structures, but, um, largely the open spaces are programmed too. And the city code, while it addressed, addressed, uh, signs on buildings, uh, did not really address, uh, things in the open space. So that's a big part of what we were here to, um, uh, ensure we, uh, changed. And, uh, Philip, in our last meeting, our briefing meeting, you, uh, brought up some benchmark cities and said, how do we compare? Uh, how do we judge this against other cities? And so we have put together, uh, three different comparisons. And, uh, the top, we just pulled Accra Shore as a typical, um, structure, one of many. And the current allowance right now above forty feet is the green bar on the top drawing. If you can see the yellow bar below it, we have to get a variance for every sign that was bigger than that yellow bar. And so the second drawing down shows the five percent allowance and that we would be able to take that allowance and distribute it, uh, anywhere that we wanted on that facade. And our benchmark here is LA, and you can see their signage area. And the middle zone, uh, allows up to sixty percent of signage coverage. So we're, they're sixty, we're five. And, um, whoops, it didn't go too far. And for their ground-mounted signs, uh, they have three different categories. Uh, they have a ground-mounted sign that is with a fifty-foot height limit. They have larger signs allowed along freeways. They have even bigger signs, uh, to identify the landmark buildings that are there. What we're asking for is in the bottom left of a maximum fifty-foot height with a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot size limit. And note that in LA, they have height limits, but there is no limit on the size of the sign. And these are some photographs that show you the result of the LA code. And the, uh, these are the, the code, if anybody's interested in, in it. Uh, we've highlighted a few, uh, interesting differences. And, uh, one of them is illumination, and they allow, uh, uh, nits that are twice as bright as our sign code. We're not asking for that. We like where they are. Second is Dallas Victory Center. Uh, again, our current allowances on the top are proposed as in the middle, and they allow, um, the green area that's in the bottom, that is about thirty percent of the sign facade. And this is a, uh, photograph of what that results in. And one of the things that we, uh, learned from this sign code is they encourage, uh, cross-promotion of special, uh, events throughout the facilities within their assigned district. So with each of these codes, and there are almost every code in the city that we looked at, uh, we've, we've learned something. And lastly, here is, uh, Columbus, and they basically don't have a sign code. And, uh, you propose the type of, uh, signage that you want, and, uh, uh, they approve it or not, and we're not asking for anything like in the bottom right where it's blatant, um, product advertising. District map?
Yeah, sure. Um, this is just the overall, this is the, what is called the North Shore Entertainment District. Uh, go back one though, Bill. So the district itself extends from the casino to the War Hall generally, and Reed's Dale to the park by Allegheny River. Um, now, most of the signage that we have, there's three types that may, or four types of signage. Um, wall-based or structure-based signage, uh, ground-based signage, large video displays and temporary event signs. For the most part, um, the entire district only applies to temporary event signs. Then if you could go to the next one. We have five sub-districts, which are, you can see the casino, sub-district, Science Center, Accra Shore, PNC and POP District. The other types of signage that we have, the structure-based, large video displays and ground, uh, ground signs only apply in those colored sub-districts. So that's pretty much it. When I just run through, even though Corey, Mr. Lehman gave a really good explanation, I think Bill.
We're going to try to make it a little more visual for you. And so, um, there, you're hearing a new term of structure-based. And so we've kind of shifted that from wall-mounted signage. And the Oracle Park in the lower right is a good example of how our buildings often are open. There, we're not putting signs on walls, we're putting them on, on structures. So that's a, something, a new definition that we're, uh, bringing to the table. And, uh, the way that we are calculating this is shown visually in the, uh, lower right corner, and we have some signs that, uh, can extend above the roof parapet, and we're aggregating the total of these signs, and we'll keep track of them, uh, every time we are, uh, requesting additional signage. Uh, for regulation, this is, we, um, and I admire the planning staff for trying to really push for, uh, how these, this code would impact their, uh, facilitation of that. And so with the wall signage, we came up with, um, three categories. And so signs that are two-hundred-and-fifty square foot or greater have staff design review required and planning commission review required. And then the next category are signs that are less than two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and, uh, they have staff review, but not planning commission. So that's a mid-size sign. And then signs less than fifty feet will require staff review, but they are not, um, uh, we can have as many of them as we want. Uh, they're usually incidental messages and wayfinding, uh, that are not, uh, significant to the facade. And we have ground signage. And so this is some benchmark imaging, and you can see how, uh, sculptural and fun, uh, these are. They really help to enliven, uh, and bring energy and a positive vibe to the district. And we have three of them in our new code, and they are marquee signs, which is a, a new type of sign, a large sign and a small sign. And so there are regulations for each of these. And, uh, what are marquee signs? This is a new to the vocabulary. And what I'm showing you are completely inspirational. There's no intent to install these, but you can also consider these like selfie signs. So it'd be terrific at, um, Rivers to have a giant, uh, awr outside or Cayman Science Center to have some dimensional letters that, um, you might interact with, or their new logo. Uh, wouldn't it be great to have a giant Pittsburgh Steelers or Pittsburgh Panthers somewhere on the site that, um, fans could have their picture taken with? And sculptural objects. And if the space is tighter, uh, we'd encourage having a giant helmet or a Big P or something in the, in the landscape. And wouldn't this be fun to have a big, uh, can that would immediately identify and brand the, um, uh, POP District? And again, there's no intent to install these. These are just to give a visualization. And temporary event signage. Uh, in the upper left, we have a Super Bowl. Hopefully, we'll have one someday. In the lower right is the NFL Draft, which we're preparing for. Uh, these are largely like the, in the case of the draft, this is an NFL-produced event. Uh, we have to be competitive to what's happening in, uh, other cities. And I think Corey explained the difference, uh, between what a major temporary event sign, uh, uh, sign code would look like and a minor temporary event. So this is a whole new category of looking at how events are approved. And again, large video displays, we put limits on how many are in the district, and we're keeping and we're keeping to the same city size and luminance levels. And special definitions, we went over some of these. And these are really the new words that we're bringing into the into the language, like the difference between a major temporary event and minor temporary event, and on and on. And that's, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, and so I think that's our presentation. And again, thank you, Corey and Kate, everyone.
Enter up.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you to the applicants. At this time, we take public testimony. Is there anyone in the room or online who would like to speak to this? If so, you have three minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Hello all. Thank you for having me here. My name is David Demko. I'm the Assistant Director of Scenic Pittsburgh. Scenic Pittsburgh is opposed to sign proliferation, especially LED sign and billboard proliferation. This is probably the worst billboard legislation I've seen in this forum. I've been at this for 15 years now. Three things I'd like to say upfront. One, I was not invited to the collaborative process. Two, comparing Pittsburgh to Los Angeles, we might as well be comparing it to Times Square or Las Vegas. If you know anything about Los Angeles, it's a signage hellscape. And three, I'd like to point out that the largest sign that we allow in the city now is 750 square feet. That's the large billboard. It's only allowed certain districts of the city. I'll try to go through this quickly. Major temporary event signs, if you look closely, there's no size limit on them. Second of all, they can be placed up to two months before the starting event and two weeks after. That's two and a half, two and a half months. That's two weeks short of the entire summer. Small, the small temporary event signs, you're allowed 25 for a single fence, 25. And they could be up to 500 square feet. Like I said, 700 feet is the largest sign that we allow in the city. So 500 square feet is not a small sign. Billboards generally come in 300 square feet and 750 square feet. Structure-based public destination signs, they're allowed on the roofs of the public destination facility. Nowhere do we allow, in the city, do we allow rooftop signs? In fact, most cities do not allow rooftop signs. It may extend beyond the peak of the parapet wall. Again, you know, we do not generally allow rooftop signs. Let's see. Here we are, the structure-based facility signs, unlimited number of signs, up to 50 square feet of all of them, an unlimited amount of square signs. Smell cell ground signs under 50 feet, unlimited of signs, unlimited number of signs, maintain a horizontal spacing of 50 feet. Now, 50 feet is halfway between home and first base. Marquee-style signs up to 250 square feet. That's three times larger than a large billboard. Ground-based signings shall also maintain space at 50 feet. Again, that's a short period. Shall not extend more than 50 feet in height from the top of the sign to the ground. A 50-foot-high sign. In all the city, we only allow signs to be 40 feet tall. A 50-foot sign would be able to see from, the purpose of 50-foot signs is to be seen from downtown, to be seen from Mount Washington, and to be seen from the 279 Highway. Finally, the oddest thing I hear, I see, is the attempt to regulate content. If you know anything about signage, once you've determined through ordinance that a sign is appropriate to the context and character of a neighborhood, you cannot regulate what goes on at sign. Sign owners have 100% free speech rights. They go to this twisted sponsor means a certain person or entity across promotional event. Like, what is that? We only have a certain class of advertisers that are allowed to advertise on these LED billboards? How is that enforced? Does the billboard owner have to report?
That's three minutes.
Pardon?
That's three minutes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please vote no.
Anyone else in the room or online would like to speak to this application?
All right, Candace Kane, you can unmute yourself and provide your testimony.
Thank you. Oh, join as a panelist.
We can hear you. Please go ahead and state your testimony.
All right. Thank you. My name is Candace Kane, and I live in Fineview on the north side. I add this comment to the two email comments submitted earlier. The confluence of Pittsburgh's Three Rivers is a remarkable natural resource with historic international significance. Our location is included in the Ken Burns Presentation, American Revolution now playing on public television. The confluence is a major location for the French and Indian War, as well as the site of incredible beauty. It's unique with the steep hills rising from the river. Do we take it for granted? I think we are with this ordinance. Pittsburgh has been complimented for its progress and program to combat light pollution. This ordinance is a step backwards. It allows development more akin to the Las Vegas Strip in a balanced view of all interest. What is allowed under this ordinance will cheapen the confluence of the Three Rivers with video billboards broadcast, including commercials on huge displays, not to mention the sheer number of signs allowed, in some cases unlimited. And the other concern is that we're not just talking about a stadium sign. We're talking about signs all across this district, which encompasses the whole Riverview Park area. Finally, the Pennsylvania Constitution says this about the natural environment, and I quote, "The people have the right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of natural scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all the people, including generations to come. As trustee of these resources, the Commonwealth shall conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all people." I ask the commission to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Are there other online?
Fran iPad, you can now unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Mary Frances Barbush. I live at 828 Beach Avenue. I live in Allegheny West. We are the closest neighborhood to this development, to the entertainment district that you speak of. And I attend every meeting, and this has not been brought to us for any discussion or any input from our community. We are opposed to this increase in light along our riverfront. We would be impacted, you know, earlier on, somebody in the commission there said that we should not harm our residents. That was a quote. Well, this would be harmful to the residents. This is only interested in the people who are coming for entertainment, but not what harm or impact would go to the people. And we have been told that the city was going to try and reduce light pollution, and this increases it dramatically. This is a bad idea. I'm asking all of you to please vote no. And to also say, you did not engage with the people who are the residents and the taxpayers who serve and live here. You only brought forth the people who are in the venues that are along, that would want to be impacting, you know, to us. So it was not a fair thing at all. Please respect the surroundings, especially along the riverfront and in our parks. This light would definitely impact, you know, nightlight, which is bad for us, for our sleeping, as well as all the mammals that are impacted as well. So I just am so sad that this is being proposed, and you're going to rush to do it because of this NFL draft. And then we would be, you know, these signs would be there. And then you would want to have advertising for product that you're saying now would not be happening. But I assume that once that sign's up there, that's going to come next. And you'll think, well, the signs are already here. So please don't allow this. This is a bad idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay. At this time, we open it up to the commissioners. Are there any commissioner comments?
This is Commissioner Blackwell. I just have one comment on what the transition would be after the draft. With the lights, how would they change? And also, could the lights, you know, the sign fixtures be more isolated to where the draft and where the stadium and the nightlife per se would be? Just considering what I just heard in relation to the residents. Thank you.
Commissioner Blackwell, this is zoning administrator Lehman. I'm just asking for, wanted to follow up and respond, but I want to get a little clarity. Your question about what happens after the draft, is that with the signage related to the draft?
Yes, the large signage and in reference to signage and lighting referred to as temporary, yes.
Sure. So I'll talk a little bit about temporary event signs specific to the draft or any other major event. There is a timeline where those signs need to be taken down after the event. And if, from what I understand of other cities' experiences with the NFL draft is that they would be taken down, that the draft and other events like this are within a large contained area. It's all very highly orchestrated. There would be, I believe, some teardown period. I don't know the specific time period, but my understanding in what I've heard and seen from other cities and heard so far is that there wouldn't be an intent to leave signs up from within the draft area or otherwise related to the draft after after the event for any period of time, or any long period of time. The code has a requirement for them to be taken down, or for them to not be up any longer than two weeks after the end of the event. I want to make just one distinction and to help clarify on temporary event signs. A temporary event sign is a sign advertising, identifying the event. So typically, we see those for like the marathon, other kind of larger events. Sometimes they're banners across streets. Sometimes they're located on buildings. We have this already in the city code. The North Shore legislation provides an expanded and kind of more, a little bit more clarity than what the current city code allows. Does that answer the question about the temporary event signs?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure residents were, it was clear to the residents, the specifics regarding it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And I also wanted to respond to, you asked about the concerns that residents raised about impact on the riverfronts. This, as I stated in my presentation, the, one of the significant goals that city planning had and that we all worked together on was to make sure that the electronic signs wouldn't be impacting the riverfront, the riverfront trails. That was of the highest importance to us, and we believe that the changes that we made significantly limit the ability of that type of signage to have an impact on the riverfronts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dick, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, yeah. I just want to clarify that my understanding is there is no increase in the amount of luminance allowed for signs, the same thing as we have in the code now. Certainly, that's true, isn't it?
That's correct. The initial version had an increase in luminance, and this version that we returned with restored back to the city's existing levels.
Okay. And there certainly would be somewhat more light with larger signs. But the actual limited power of each sign is not greater than what it was before.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? I guess I will ask my questions then. So I was just looking at the draft legislation, and I just had questions for, I guess, both Mr. Lehman and the applicants as well. So are, like, now that you've worked together on this for a few weeks, are there any, any points of, you know, that you feel like still need to be worked out? Or is this, is this a pretty good compromise from both, from both sides, from your perspective?
Yeah. Why don't you come up if you're, yeah, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. I I would say that, I think that on all the major signage types, we reached a good compromise to each one, and I don't think that there's anything else, really.
I will, the only disagreement I have is with the word compromise. The, what, what we did was come together and sort of shift our willingness together. And that was very much, you know, there are some things that I think as we went through, as we looked at other cities, what they have around their stadiums. I think staff's willingness shifted through conversation. I think that these folks, the council office, I think, as well. So I think it was, you know, intended to try to get to a win-win solution. And while I certainly, you know, I would certainly say that I think the, what you have in front of you represents, I would say we were all impressed that we were able to to get this in that short amount of time and make this level of change.
That's good to hear. And my second question is about the specific sub-districts. I noticed in the legislation that you did spell out different subsections for each of the five sub-districts, but left them blank. Was there a reason why, or what's, what's kind of the thought process of what might go in there in the future?
If there's issues that come up, I mean, that's not uncommon in a zoning ordinance to have reserved sections, as you know. So I think the idea of there is something that happens down the road, there's a mechanism in which those changes can easily be made.
Okay. All right. If there are no more commissioner comments?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to recommend under the conditions and codes that have been presented today.
I second that.
All right. I will go through everyone. So let's see. I don't have everyone's name here, but Commissioner Dick, or Commissioner Blackwell, Commissioner Blackwell.
Yeah, Blackwell would be first. We're doing an alphabet.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Maza?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantonia?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
And with that, we will wait for the chair to come back in.
Yeah, I told her to come in.
Thank you. All right, so we have completed under Hearing and Action items one and two. Moving on to agenda item number three, under Hearing and Action, and it is as follows. This is Council Bill 2025-1993. This was continued from September 23 of 2025 and October 7, 2025. This is a zoning map amendment for the Hazelwood-Riv-GI District in Hazelwood. Presenting this afternoon is Ms. Tan.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Um, after the last hearing, we did ask for a determination from the city's law department. Has anything happened? Is?
Uh, give us just one moment, Commissioner Maza.
Yeah.
I believe Mr. Lehman may be able to answer that.
Yeah, we want to, I want to see if there was a determination from the city law department on the legislation and what we asked at the last meeting.
For the Hazelwood.
For the re, for the rezone.
Mr. Lehman, we are on item number three, uh, Council Bill twenty twenty-five nineteen ninety-three. I read it in. Ms. Tandon was, was getting ready to, to proceed and uh, Commissioner Maza wanted some clarity on.
Sure.
We discussed the last time how we wanted to make sure that the city law department was going to discuss what, you know, the legislation before us.
Sure, we uh, we did confer with the law department and I did get um, some internal communication. They're not going to publish a decision. They would be, uh, I'm sure if necessary, able to facilitate uh, an executive session and meet with the planning commission. Uh, but the general uh, guidance uh, relates to um, whether or not there uh, is a preemption, uh, meaning that whether or not the railroads would have some preemption to zoning requirements. Um, and I, is that the, is that the question that you were asking about? Are they exempt?
I mean, if the people were here, you know, I don't want to waste their time if we're going to move forward with something we can't even recommend because of, that you know, the.
Yeah, I, so I didn't get any advice that would, that would state that the commission couldn't uh, make a recommendation in that way. Uh, there is a, 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 there is a preemption, uh, there is a pathway for railroads to request um, uh, uh, request a waiver essentially. Um, and uh, certainly I'm sure the railroad representatives will speak to whether that's something that is a burden or not, uh, everybody's going to have their own position on that. Um, the uh, the legislation changing to uh, Riv IMU from Riv GI makes uh, one of the uses associated with railroads uh, special exception, which is a type of permitted use. Uh, but it's not prohibitive to, um, it doesn't make anything illegal uh, under the zoning code. Um, and of course, railroads do have a preemption uh, that they can claim against zoning uh, permitting requirements and that kind of thing. So uh, I'm not an expert at that and I don't want to represent that. Um, that's my general understanding. Um, and of course, any application we'd get in the future, uh, we would uh, apply the code as we do with anything.
Okay, Commissioner Maza, um, it seems like you might have some more.
Well, I'm just making sure that we're not setting ourselves up for a lawsuit. You know, with, with the preemption, I'm just make, you know, I just want to make sure, I don't want to go through the process and then we're bringing a new administration in and then they're going to be set up for failure right, right when they come in. I just want to make sure the process is right. I want to make sure these people time here is, you know, worth being here and.
All those things moving forward.
I will say we're going to be able to establish that this was duly noticed properly so that there isn't a, a risk there. Uh, and we'll be able to uh, uh, I think proceed as the, as the city's code uh, instructs when we have a legislative change from city council. Um, and again, if you'd want to request an executive session from the law department, they might be able to give you uh, more specific advice. Um, but uh, we have a lot of people here. Um, I don't think, you know, that my, my recommendation would be to proceed.
How, how are you?
I mean, honestly, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that myself.
Okay.
That's me, you know, that's not at any other commissioners.
So, um,
I, I'd, I'd rather request an executive session with the law department or you guys have that, that uh, meeting and then we got, we, then we move forward with that. Because I, I know the law department right now isn't really moving a lot of things, I wouldn't think because of the new administration, but.
Yeah, if it, if it is helpful, I can tell you that the, it, the information that I did get from the law department didn't say that proceeding with this would be uh, an explicit risk.
So um, give me just one moment, Commissioner Maza, and, and here's why, because I see Commissioner Dick's hand up and I just want to make sure at this time if there's some additional comment. And then uh, Commissioner O'Neill, I don't know if you had your hand up as well, but Commissioner Dick, is your hand up on this? Uh, oh, no.
I'm sorry, it was left from before. I didn't realize.
Okay, not a problem. Just coming back in, so that's fine.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with what Commissioner, or what the, Mr. Corey says to, about it, okay.
Oh, okay, you're, you're comfortable, okay.
I'm comfortable with proceeding, yes.
Okay, um, Commissioner O'Neill?
Uh, same, I feel like to evaluate whether there are issues related to the legislation, I would need to hear the presentation and the testimony. Um, I don't think there, it's, you know, facially infirm. Uh, rezoning to a district, different district is pretty standard. Um, especially where a railroad goes through most districts.
You're a little bit low and, and uh, so I don't know that everybody heard exactly what you were saying. But uh, if you were to wrap it up i- into a little bit smaller summary, a little bit louder.
Sure. Uh, I was just going to say that I think we need to hear the presentation and the testimony to determine whether there are any issues. But on its face, this is a standard uh, rezone to a different district and we have railroads in almost every zoning district. Uh, so it, it's not uh, you know, on its face unlawful.
All right, thank you. Um, Commissioner Maza, would you be comfortable just moving forward? Let's allow, you know, the general public is, is, is here today and then maybe, you know, after hearing some testimony, I'm not.
No, I understand what you're saying. I, I have no problem recu- recusing from this as well and mov- and moving, you know, stepping out as well. Because I just don't feel comfortable. That's my personal opinion. You know, nothing against everybody else and, you know, I, I understand the situation, what's happening over there, you know? And I appreciate everybody that's here. I do, don't get me wrong. I just don't feel comfortable with the way it's moved forward, that's all. So I'm going to step out.
Well, I don't, I don't, no, I don't, I don't want to see you step out. I, I'd like you to stay at the table. What I'm asking is that um, is there a level of comfort to go ahead and move forward and at least have the applicant present? And then um, allow testimony to be given? And if the decision is that we don't make a decision yet, then, then that's okay. But can we move forward reasonably, at least hearing, you know, the, the, the applicant and a, and any testimony beyond that? And if we hold at that point, that could be okay too. Okay, all right. Um, if that's fair and reasonable to the uh, other commissioners? Fair and reasonable? Okay, very good. Uh, then let's move forward. I'm, thank you, please, and thank you.
Thank you. Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash one nine nine-three or DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one nine five. Filed by Councilwoman Bob Warwick was referred to the planning commission by city council on July fourteen, twenty twenty-five for the commission's report and recommendation. The legislation proposes a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district on parcels highlighted in the map attached to the report and in the presentation from Riv GI, which is Riverfront General Industrial Subdistrict, to Riv IMU, which is Riverfront Industrial Mixed Use. Per section nine twenty-two dot zero five dot B dot two, an application to amend the boundaries of the zoning map district may be proposed by the city council, the planning commission, the owner of the subject property, or the owner's agent. The largest properties within the proposory zoning area are owned by public utility companies uh, such as CSX Transportation, which operate the rail line and BFI Waste Services of Pennsylvania. The proposed Riv IMU um, district sub-district allows a broader range of uses, including residential, retail, educational, cultural activities, and limited industrial uses. In contrast, the existing Riv GI sub-district is more permissive of heavy industrial uses such as car washes, construction-related activities, and other intensive operations. The use table has also been, um, the use table can be referenced in section nine one one dot zero two of the zoning code. The parcels proposed for rezoning are adjacent to a mix of existing zoning designations, including the R one AVH GI UI R one AH and the SP ten, which is Hazelwood Green. Given the proximity of residential districts and existing homes, the Riv IMU designations is more appropriate. It provides a transitional zoning framework that limits high industrial uh, activity near residential areas while allowing compatible mixed-use development in the area. A DAM Development Activities Meeting was held with Hazelwood Initiative on August nineteen, twenty twenty-five. The DM report is attached to the commissioner's report. The hearing on September twenty-three was continued to October seven, twenty twenty-five at Planning Commission to allow more time for the railroad company and waste transfer sta- station to meet with the community and the council office. Per commission's request on October seven, twenty twenty-five and code sections nine twenty-two dot zero one dot C dot one and nine twenty-two dot zero one dot C dot two, property owners within one fifty feet of the proposed zone area change were re-notified of the proposal through mailed postcards and fifteen posted notices were placed onsite, twenty-one days in advance of the November eighteen, twenty twenty-five hearing date, which is today. Additionally, the notice was also posted on the website and emailed to the entire mailing list of the planning commission on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. And the recommended motion from staff is that the planning commission of the city of Pittsburgh make a positive recommendation on Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash one nine nine-three or MP, DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one nine five for a zoning map amendment to change the zone from Riv GI to Riv IMU for the parcels listed in the report and the legislation. We'll now have the presentation from Councilwoman.
Thank you, and thank you once again to the planning staff for all your help with this. It's been a long road and thank you to everybody who's here um, today. So uh, yeah, so let's get, and thank you to the commissioners. This is round three of, of the hearing. So I, I do appreciate um, the time uh, that you've all given to this. Uh, so, all right. So legislation language, we've gone through. Okay, so this is the map of the area for the proposed rezoning, right? It is currently Riv GI, General Industrial, that's the existing. And the proposed change is to Riv IMU, Industrial Mixed Use. Uh, now here are some uh, riverfront areas throughout the city that you will also see include railroads and are also, you know, there's various um, zoning districts along our river fronts, including on our railroads that include the Riv IMU. So this will not be the only place in Pittsburgh where a railroad is zoned as industrial mixed use. So um, here we have, and then a little bit more there, see around Stanton Heights, et cetera, so. All right, uh, so some of the uses in, the current uses in the riverfront general industrial, right? Let you see, there, there's a, a number of them, you know, hazardous operations stick out, incinerator, uh, incineration, solid waste, et cetera. Um, one thing you will notice in the current Riv GI is that there are no residential uses allowed in the G, in the Riv GI because presumably uh, it is harmful to have these types of facilities next to resident, you know, next to people's homes, right? Um, and if you look at the Riv IMU uses, this is the proposal, right, the change proposal. Uh, in the, there are far more um, uh, uses in the Riv IMU, potential uses. Um, but one of them is residential, right? So, you know, there is still industry allowed, right, in the Riv IMU. But, but um, there, there are limits on the types of industry uh, which, you know, which, so that they would not har- cause harm, right? To, to local residents, local businesses. So we've talked a little bit about the activity to date. Um, in the initial briefing, um, I, I will say from the commission, just a sort of uh, my thought process around, you know, why, why we have so many folks here today. Uh, when we did the initial briefing, this really seemed pretty straightforward, right? That was the impression that I got from the commissioners and the commentary on the briefing. Um, and um, you know, that this, that this really made sense, right, to change this zone uh, from general industrial to industrial mixed use, just to, you know, do, because of the proximity to um, to residential and, and commercial districts. Um, then when the, um, when the first hearing came up, that's when, you know, we started to get lawyers from the, the local property owners, right? Large teams of lawyers. Uh, there was a request that we take some more time so that some of the, um, some of the property owners could meet with the community. Of course, always appreciate uh, when local, um, local property owners, local businesses come and meet uh, with the community. So it's nice that this has, you know, been the impetus for um, better collaboration with the community. Um, I know that now some of the property owners are joining our local community groups. Uh, since we've started this process, some of the property owners have um, uh, put forth uh, ideas of potential support for community groups and, and other things around the neighborhood. Always welcome, much appreciated. Um, then we came back for sort of round two, again, lots of lawyers and I will, I'm, I'm with you, Commissioner Maza. Teams of lawyers make me nervous too. They made me nervous at that, at that meeting. Um, uh, there were some concerns, so just to talk a little bit about the concerns. Um, there were some concerns about preemption, right, the railroad's preemption. Uh, we, we did, Mr. Lehman and I did have a meeting with the law department and the understanding is that the railroads do have preemption, right, over our zoning code, so that they, you know, they, they are allowed to do things with their properties that other, um, other property owners might not be able to because they are the railroads. So that seems pretty standard, um, and not a concern. Um, concerns about existing operations being moved, that um, there is no impact on, uh, look, if I could change the operations that are down there now, trust me, I would. If I could, if I could get rid of some of the facilities that are down there now that are harming residents of those communities, I would. But unfortunately I can't, right? When you, you cannot zone existing operations out of where they are, right? All that we can do is um, make zoning changes that will impact what can go in an area in the future. Um, there were um, concerns voiced about the value of some vacant land. I recall that, that was from someone over in Hayes. Had some concerns about the, the value of his vacant land and what could he put on, on that land if we made the zoning change? And I would argue to that concern, you know, that's, that is why we are here, right? That is, that is the, this planning commission and the city's um, uh, you know, that is within our power to determine what can be done, right? What can you put on that vacant land? And if it's something hazardous and that's not what's going to work, then we need to update our zoning code accordingly. Um, and then the final concern was about notice. So just, that's, you know, that, that there were concerns, there was not enough notice given to property owners. And uh, because of that, and I appreciate the planning commission uh, taking the, you know, making the decision. I was a little frustrated the day of, but I'm glad that they made the decision to repost, right, to re, make sure that everyone had notice. And so uh, I, I, these were provided by the planning team, uh, you know, just some indication of the notices that were posted, you know, what was mailed out. Um, just so that everyone can feel confident that uh, that proper notice was given. So, um, all right. This is just an aerial view, so you can see just for, you know, from the sky, sort of what this, what this area looks like. Um, you can see the Hazelwood community right there. Um, all right, so why the zoning change now? Uh, this is something that we've talked about in, in previous presentations. So uh, we are, you know, as a city, uh, Pittsburgh is reimagining our river fronts, right? We've seen that, right, in just previous presentations today, right? We saw a nice new uh, housing develop, you know, big beautiful apartment building going up on our river fronts, uh, care being taken, uh, you know, we have events going on on our river fronts. Um, over the past decade, that, the relationship we have with our rivers has evolved drastically, right? They are no longer dumping grounds for industry. Uh, you know, they are a valuable asset for, for the city, right, for our economy. Uh, clean rivers improve our quality of life. And uh, you know, we just need to look at the North Shore, South Side, and the Strip District to see that kind of future potential that we um, hope to see one day in Hazelwood. Um, environmental justice, right? Zoning for heavy industry in lower-income communities like Hazelwood has a dish, has disproportionately impacted, you know, given a negative impact on the health and well-being of historically marginalized Pittsburghers. Lots of those folks are here in the room today. We should be righting the wrongs of the past, not making them worse, by ensuring that our zoning code protects nearby residents now and for the long term. And finally, Hazelwood is growing. From affordable housing, safer streets, to economic development, the City of Pittsburgh, the U R A, our local nonprofit foundations and university partners are investing heavily, heavily in the future of Hazelwood. We have a new robotics innovation center coming up with C M U. We have a pit is opening up its bioforge for bioengineering. We have new housing developments going up on the Hazelwood Green. We have new breweries that have come up, right, down, down in Scotch Bottom, right below the tracks, right? And all of these things, you know, and to support all of these things, we need to make sure that this growth is, you know, happening in a safe and healthy environment, both for our residents and also to invite people into the community, right? To make Hazelwood a place that you, that you really want to come to. So I just wanted a quick picture. This came from our friends at Allegheny Cleanways. This is the river along Hazelwood. This is a, this is, you know, this is a picture from a cleanup in the river. Now, I'm not saying all of this is coming from the industrial use, right? You know, just, just right upstream, but, you know, it's not great. Our riverfronts need help. Oops. So I really want to, and this is, you know, why we have so many people here today that I want to really impress upon the Commission, because, you know, we talk a lot about communities and zoning and whatnot, but I think sometimes when you're not from a place, it's hard sometimes to imagine what we're talking about. But Hazelwood is a community where people live. And so here are just some pictures of Scotch Bottom. This is the area below the tracks that abuts this current, you know, riverfront general industrial, right? So you see, we've got houses, we've got homes, we've got little community garden spots, you know. We've got a war memorial, we've got a playground, right? This is, this is where people live. These are, these are people's homes, these are our homes. So with that in mind, I just want to talk a little bit about the current living conditions for Hazelwood residents, and I'm sure you're going to hear about some of that from the folks who came here today to speak. There is excessive trash throughout the community, especially through the Second Avenue Business District and below the tracks, much of which is from trucks coming in and out from facilities that are in this G I. You know, lots of trash blowing off those trucks, trucks driving through the community all the time, loud trucks constantly. There is noise at all hours of the day and night for residents living below the tracks. In fact, my office, I just, just right before this, my, I got a text. Someone called into the office who lives on, on, I believe, Gladstone Street, just up the hill, who has measured a hundred and twenty decibels coming from this area below the tracks as early as five A M. As early as five A M. Bright lights at all hours of the day and night. Let's make it, you know, make it impossible to have your windows open. I'm sure you're going to hear about that, impossible to have your windows open in the summertime, forget about it, right? And then finally, obviously, the big one, the smell and the rodents. I mean, it is just, it's, it's a mess, right? It's a mess, and that is now. That is with the facilities there now. And as I said before, I wish that I, you know, and that really, I think that there is more that the city should be doing. There is more that the Health Department should be doing, you know, and, and I'm glad, actually, that some of the, the folks who, who have properties down below are here and are here to hear from the residents about what it is like living next to some of those facilities. At any rate. So a lot of, some few pictures, life next to the Riv G I. This is from someone's front porch, just so you can see how close we are talking about. This is how close these homes are to this industrial space. This is one of the facilities. This is a recycling facility. As you can see, there's open material just out open. It smells awful down there. Couple more pictures. This is, and this is recycling material. And this is just out in the open. And here you can see, you see that home right there? That's how far away it is. That's how close. If you can see here, right, that's, that's another view from the backside. This is another home you can see right, right off there in the corner, the blue, that's the recycling plant. That's someone's home right there. This is a nighttime view and a daytime view of one of those homes. You can see the light coming out. It's like, you know, it's like it's never dark. It can never be dark. Oh, yeah, here's, here's some of the other facilities, right? More light. This is on Langhorn Street. I think maybe the railroad folks or the rail yard folks might be familiar with this space. That's a community garden right there. That's where the community garden is. Again, just another picture. This is where people live. I want to underscore this. I have, are you able to play that? So, yeah, let's, this is, this is Erin McQueen. She was not able to come today. I just, but she did want me to, to share this from her. She lives on Langhorn.
Hi, I live at fifty, fifty, fifty-one thirteen Langhorn Street, below the tracks. It's disgusting down here with the railroad tracks and all the other stuff down here that's going on with the trash and everything. I've lived down here like going on twenty-six years, and they just do what they want to do. They come down here all hours of the night. They just like work, do whatever they want. It's noisy down here, nobody has, they don't have respect for us. They just come in here and do whatever they want. We don't want nothing down here, no trash down here. Hi, I live at fifty, fifty.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I wanted to quickly, just to, just to remind the Commissioners of, of the Greater Hazelwood Neighborhood Plan, which, which was, you know, passed into law in November of two thousand and nineteen. One of the top, the number one environmental concern, and this is from the plan, is air quality. According to the American Lung Association's twentieth annual State of the Air Report, Pittsburgh's air quality is worse now than it was three years ago. This is in two thousand and nineteen. Ground level ozone layers are higher, and soot pollution is significantly higher and worsening daily. Correspondingly, Greater Hazelwood's air quality is poor, with particulate matter concentration higher than the national standard. Local contributors, contributors to poor air outdoor, to poor outdoor air quality include vehicles, driving vehicles, idling, and diesel trains. Air quality is also comprised by reason, is compromised by regional industrial activity. The highest concentrations of nitrogen dioxide and black carbon are found along the neighborhood's highest-traveled roadways, Second and Hazelwood Avenues, and the active rail lines and rail yard located close to the Monongahela. Both air pollutants concentrate on the Second Avenue and Greater Hazelwood Business District, a vital gathering place which the community aims to further develop. And then a little later, it says, "Given the demographic and socioeconomic makeup of Hazelwood as well as exposures to high levels of air pollution, children living in Hazelwood are at increased risk for poorer asthma outcomes." In the Economic Development section of the plan, it reads as follows. Development Zones. Greater Hazelwood residents are eager to match the development of Hazelwood Green with improvements to the rest of the neighborhood that will ensure renewed vitality extends throughout and benefits the entire community. The community process identified five priority areas in which to concentrate infill and focus improvements to connectivity, walkability, and streetscapes. The Hazelwood Avenue Corridor, the Commercial Corridor, below the tracks, Glenwood, and Glen Hazel. And then finally, a little bit more about the zone below the tracks. Below the tracks includes the part of the Hazelwood neighborhood, also known as Scotch Bottom, to the west of Second Avenue between Hazelwood Green and the Glenwood Yards. The majority of the area is zoned for residential use, single-family attached. Other zoning categories include general industrial, riverfront general industrial, and specialty plan district. Most of the area is used for residential purposes, although commercial entities such as breweries have shown interest in locating there. They are there now. They're there now. We have the breweries, it's great. Most of the vacant land in part of this neighborhood is privately owned and located in the Riv G I. Suggested development for below the tracks is residential infill, both attached and detached. Recommendations include townhomes, walk-up units, along to comm sub- bordering in Hazelwood Green. Previously suggested business-to-business commercial production space may fit well into this part of the community. To link Greater Hazelwood more directly with the innovation happening at the Hazelwood Green, landscaped buffers should go in between the residential area and railway utilities. So that's from the plan. I just want to make sure that the, that the Commissioners remember that this plan exists. And then I do want to highlight as well just some letters. We got about fourteen letters, and I want to say, oh, and there was someone else. Yeah, so we got about fourteen letters from people, not just from Hazelwood, but from all over. I want to let you know. The residents in Squirrel Hill, in Greenfield, community groups, business owners, landlords, pastors, churches, right? People are out here rooting for Hazelwood on this, so I want, I want you all to know that. One, one person who was here, and I also want to note that if you take a look at how many people are in this room, it is two o'clock on a Tuesday, and there are many people who could not come. I just wanted, so Zachary Carrington was here, and I asked if he wanted me to mention for him. He had to leave to, to meet his kid's bus. He actually used to work at the recycling plant. He said, "The recycling plant at the end of my street brings jobs for our community, but this, this landfill thing will not only harm residents, but the children who play every day will be smelling garbage and trash, and it's not fair. It's not okay. And I noticed my old boss is in here from the plant. I hope he says something to help our cause." So, you know, the folks in Hazelwood don't have money to send lawyers down at two P M on a Tuesday, but you all are here. And I know you may not all want to speak, but so just, just so we can see, could I see a show of hands for the, everyone who is here in support of this? Thank you, I appreciate it. So with that, yeah, I just want to say I'm very proud of my district today. I'm very proud of all of you, so thank you.
Well, does that conclude?
That concludes, yes.
Thank you, and, and I do agree that it is wonderful to see so many people down here in, in, in the process, because that's what this process is all about. Thank you for the presentation. We've got to open the floor at this time for some public testimony. So we'd ask that anybody else in the, the room that would like to give some testimony, please do so. And anyone online that is choosing to do so, yes, sir. So here's what happens, and, and maybe you're, you're new to the process or not, but if you're going to come on up, we like you to have, come on up to the podium, right over there where the mic is, and then you're going to share your name with us, your address, and we give you about three minutes to, to talk about what you'd like to give testimony on.
Okay, my name is Derwin Fuller Senior, and that's Derwin with a U, not an E. I live at fifty-four eleven Second Avenue, maybe two hundred feet from the trash place. You know what I mean? I sit out on my porch every day, and I can smell, and I see the rats all day, every day. And another thing is the traffic. The traffic on Second Avenue is already terrible. I walk out my door in the morning, well, in the morning from six A M till ten A M, even in the summertime, I have to shut my window because I cannot sleep. There's so much traffic on Second Avenue. And the, and the semis that are coming through Hazelwood now is ridiculous. It's never been like that, and I'm a life-the-world resident. And another thing, I don't know if any, any of you guys ever heard of John Menadell. Them semis just coming up and down Hazelwood Avenue is ridiculous. He got hit by a semi, I want to say back in the fifties or something, and coming down Hazelwood Avenue and tore his head off, his body. There's an elementary school up in Squirrel Hill or Greenfield with his name on it, John Menadell. And it's just way, way, way too much traffic coming through Hazelwood. And that's basically all I got to say, but Hazelwood is a residential community, and it needs to stay like that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and giving testimony. All right, yes, please. If there's testimony that you'd like to give, come on up to the podium. Please state your name. You may need to spell it, depending on if the court reporter got it, and your address, please.
My name's Teresa Nagy, N A G Y. I live at five two-two-nine Blair Street in Hazelwood. In my family's, we're the fifth generation in this family home. I didn't realize that we weren't even supposed to be technically, we're on that map in the industrial zone. It's us and the one other house. We are in the industrial zone. We are not on the perimeter of it, we are in it. I just wanted to come to say what we deal with on the daily. We have two little, we have two daughters. Excuse me, I'm nervous.
Please don't be nervous, this is fine.
So, as a resident located within the general industrial zone, we would like assurances that no more disruptive activities beyond what we currently have are permitted. Our existing challenges that we deal with on the daily basis would be transflow, which we're right next door, that photo they showed with the blue fencing, that's our neighbors that are with us. We are subject, they come in at four thirty in the morning, between the employees screaming and carrying on with each other, there are loud cars pulling up, the profanity-laced things that come out of their mouth that early in the morning, don't understand it. They come in, four thirty, they're loud, they turn the machines on. We don't need alarm clocks because they're machines, and the idling trucks that are lining up to do the scale and bring their load in are sitting there idling. We cannot have our windows open between the noise and the fumes from the trucks. It's unbearable. If it, if you leave them open, you're up at that hour, you're up closing everything, and you don't want to wake the kids up, so you run into their room to close everything up. Honestly, it feels like living at a truck stop. That's the best way to describe it, because the trucks are constantly coming. The trains, I get the trains or the trains, and they run all night. Three thirty in the morning, them brakes are squealing, our house shakes. It's, yeah, we've done construction, and there's already hairline cracks through everything because of it. It's, I guess, the cost of living down there. The transload did just have new lighting installed. They have not turned it on yet. We're terrified how bright that's going to be. It's, their, the streetlights are taller than the streetlights that are the city streetlights in there, and they're everywhere. So we're afraid of that. On top of that, to add to it, the bright lights from C S X on the railroad towers, they exceed reasonable levels. They're flooding the neighborhood, all of down below is lit up like it's daytime when you go down there. Bright white blinding lights, they used to be orange, they're now white. As a result, we've tended our windows to our home to reduce the impact, and we have to keep our curtains closed in the evening because it lights the rooms up. It's ridiculous. The C S X, the train yard lights that they have on these huge towers are absolutely ridiculous. For the health and overall quality of the neighborhood, we prefer to avoid any further developments that could choose to worsen these conditions, and we really hope that you support this plan, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. It wasn't so bad. Do we have additional testimony?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Christopher Olson, O L S O N. I live at four three five zero McCaslin Street. I hold an elected seat on the Greenfield Community Association Board. That's a five oh one C three, and the registered community organization that is the neighborhoods directly to the north and east of Hazelwood. We submitted a letter outlining the reasons for our support of Councilwoman Warwick's legislation to change the zoning from riverfront general use to riverfront mixed use. The community green, the Greenfield Community Association is so strongly in support of this that we have also wanted to have someone come down and give a verbal testimony, and that's why I'm here. that's why I'm here. For decades, our neighborhood has dealt with the consequences of heavy industrial use. You cannot zone out noise or air pollution. They just go across the zoning lines. We believe that Councilwoman Warwick's legislation is a thoughtful and responsible means to reduce future harm to our neighborhood and the adjacent neighborhood Hazelwood, while also providing for a more livable neighborhood and space for everyone. So thank you for considering our written and our verbal comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and giving testimony. You guys are doing great at creating a line, and as each one is done, please come forward, come to the mic again, state your name, address, and give your testimony.
Hello, my name is Terry Fuller, property at 5411 Second Avenue, and I want to speak on the rats. The rats are terrible there. They are rats. They are not pets. They are big as cats, and some big as dogs, and that is a hazard to my health as, as when the steel mill was in Hazelwood. So that's what I want to speak about, those rats. So we don't need any more garbage, recycle, any more things like that in our neighborhood. We want to live as healthy as we can.
Thank you for your testimony. Can we have the next one come on up? Please and thank you.
Hi, my name is Edith Abada. I live at 1527 Wolf Avenue in Braddock, PA, 15104. I've been working in Hazelwood since 2014, and I co-founded a community arts organization with Hazelwood residents in 2015, which is called Arts Excursions Unlimited. We're currently located at 5125 Second Avenue, and my time there in Hazelwood have, I've witnessed a lot of things and made a lot of connections with people who live in the section of Hazelwood that's being impacted so much by industrial activity. Part of the work that we do is we have a purple air monitor in our space so that we know what the air quality is. So I can just say, as someone who lives less than a half mile from Edgar Thompson, U.S. Steel, the air quality can be worse in Hazelwood than it is at my house. We also collaborate with Carnegie Mellon University, professors there, and we have a air monitor that's connected to and reads satellite information so that we know when people are safe. In addition, we have been working on building our own air quality monitors at our space so that people can have these monitors in their homes so that they know when it's safe to go outside, when it's safe to open the doors. So I just want to say, like, the air quality is a serious concern in Hazelwood. Probably, if you just took a raise of hands of how many people that live in Hazelwood and have asthma here, you would be surprised, right? It's very, it's very high. I also want to address, because of the industrial activity that moves in and out of the neighborhood, the number of dump trucks, the number of semis is incredibly high. Unfortunately, myself and other people in the room actually saw someone hit by a dump truck near the library and killed. So this is, you know, we get that there's a long history of industrial activity in the region and in the neighborhood, but it doesn't, you know, sort of like Councilwoman Barb said, right, there's people that live in, there's people that live in this neighborhood. So I very much encourage the planning commission here to support the change in the zoning, and, you know, for the region to be continued, to sort of be held hostage by industry and the railroad, like, it's, you know, we are in the 21st century here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Can we have the next person come on up, please?
Hello, my name is Terry Shields. I live at 5111 Glenwood Avenue, and I'm a long-life Hazelwood resident. And this has been going on for a long time, but it has gotten worse, worse. And I'm one of the ones who has asthma. So we need to stop having those industrial organizations down there dumping trash. We are not a dumping ground.
Good afternoon, I'm Lisa Atmans. I live at 509 Johnston Avenue in Hazelwood, 15207. However, also have property at 5411 Second Avenue, which my brother spoke earlier, very close to the recycling place in the railroad. And so it's unfortunate, as the councilwoman said, that this rezoning doesn't affect those businesses that are already there. You all have heard what the community is experiencing. We're asking you, please, to support this change so that these things don't increase, that, so that it doesn't get worse than what it already is. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Tevin Jordan Blair. I live up in Glen Hazel, 668 Johnston Avenue. Yeah, I've actually been walking around throughout the neighborhood. I can actually hear, like, all the noise and everything from right atop, up from the hilltop. And I've actually walked all the way past down towards the recycling center and various other places. And, yeah, like you said, it's very back. We even had, like, issues with the trash where it's even started flooding the streets and all that stuff. In fact, the building that Missy have mentioned, we actually had flooding because of trash and all that stuff going down in there, like, causing like, like, causing more, multiple issues and all that stuff. And then the various other things that have been going on, not just noise, but also the various amounts of, like, smells and all that stuff. I can smell even through the mess and stuff. And it's pretty annoying, and the traffic is nuts. Like, it needs to be, like, fixed, like, really right away, very soon, because it's not going to be tolerable anymore until, and then when people end up getting, like, killed or, like, marginally hurt by, it actually really breaks people down a lot. It needs, it needs to happen soon, or there's going to be consequences. It's going to end up, not just at Hazelwood, but the entirety of Pittsburgh and the surrounding area. So I hope you choose right.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hey, excuse me, this is the court reporter. Sir, sir, I need him to say his name.
One moment, please.
I did not catch his name at all.
Can you please state your name and then spell it for the court reporter?
T-E-V-I-N, Tevin.
Okay.
Jordan Blair hyphenate, last name.
Can you spell it?
Yes, like, George, like, the country George, and like, the regular name, how Blair is spelled, like, B-L-A-I-R.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Smith. I'm the pastor of the Keystone Church of Hazelwood, which is located at 161 Hazelwood Avenue, and also the CEO of Center of Life. We've served Hazelwood for many years. I just want to say that the, you know, I think the commission, I want the commission to take into consideration the fact that we have been dealing with this kind of thing for, you know, much longer than many of us actually have been alive. And I would remind you that Hazelwood has been rezoned, and every time we get rezoned, we get smaller in population. And so our population is probably a little over 5,000 or more. I'm not sure exactly what the exact number is right now. But there was a time when Hazelwood went all the way down to, close to the Birmingham Bridge. Now it's Hot Metal Street Bridge, you know, it keeps, it keeps getting smaller and smaller. But it gets smaller because people have to move out, and people have to move out. When you think about what is happening, what has happened over the years and what is happening now, and I think about the number, it's like something like 28% or more of our children have respiratory issues in our community, and that's, that's a serious health hazard. So in our neighborhood plan, in our Greater Hazelwood Neighborhood Plan, this is a top priority. Lessen our carbon footprint, clean our airs, clean our water, make sure that people are learning how to live differently who live in the community, but also make sure that we're collaborating and that we're doing the thing that makes sense so that people can live cleaner lives in our community. So I would, I would encourage you to, even though you're taking into consideration industry, consider putting people first, making sure that people are the priority as opposed to industry. Industry can always find a place to go, but people live there, and we're talking five, six, seven generations deep in that community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon, my name is Sonia Tillman. I am speaking on behalf of Hazelwood Initiative, the community development corporation and registered community organization serving Greater Hazelwood. I've been here before. This is my third time speaking at this hearing. We've heard clearly today and at those previous meetings, as well as at our Hazelwood Initiative Community Meeting, how the current RIVGII zoning allows for the most intensive industrial uses. You've heard from residents about how that impacts their existence today, including the hazardous operations that are not appropriate next to homes. The proposed RIVIMU zoning is far better suited to the existing conditions, meaning the homes that are nearby, the people who live nearby, and the future goals of our community. Region-wide, we have heard this today as well, families have lived for generations next to heavy industry that brought pollution and noise and rodents and truck traffic to the doorsteps of these families. We still see the results of that, you've also heard today, in Hazelwood and high asthma rates and poor health conditions. For us, the zoning change is not about our neighbors in the railroad, in the recycle center. This is not about them today. This is about environmental justice and public health and the future that we want for our community. The RIVIMU opens the door to cleaner, safer, and more balanced development, things like small businesses and community spaces and light industry that brings jobs without harming our health. It aligns with the Greater Hazelwood Neighborhood Plan, where residents have clearly called for development that supports a safe, healthy, and thriving community. Approving this change is also consistent with the city's commitment to equity, climate action, and sustainable development. Greater Hazelwood should be part of Pittsburgh's greener, more inclusive future and not left behind. Therefore, I continue to urge you to support this zoning change and stand with Greater Hazelwood residents in building a healthier and more equitable neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon, my name is Catherine with a C, Phillips. I live at 96 Cortlandt Street, below the tracks, Pittsburgh 15207. I live exactly right across from CSX. The blue fence you saw at the railroad there, that is directly across from my house. We put up with the traffic, the dust. People have said, "Yeah, you've lived there all your life, you know what it's like." No. I was able to sit on my porch. I cannot sit on my porch. I cannot have my windows open. Through the night, we hear the recycling plant. We get rodents that travel from the recycling plant through the BNO, through the CSX, all through our neighborhood. The smell comes, it depends on which way the air blows. The traffic, we have, like Teresa said, the traffic down at the railroad yards start between 4:00, 4:30. People come in motorcycles to work in the middle of the night with the radios blasting, trains in and out. I had to actually go over when the tanker trucks come in to unload, to get weighed in the morning. They, when they come in in the evening or through the night, at one point, one gentleman was parking directly right across my house at the fence, idling his truck all night. I had to literally ask the manager of the station right there to ask him to move down because we cannot keep our windows open. As for the dust, the salt plant has moved in there we were not aware of. We cannot have our windows open and doors. When I dust, it looks like I don't even dust. If I lift up a blanket, white stuff comes out. That's in my house. I was walking, doing a walk one day. I had my phone on, the screen of my phone was covered with a white powder. So we are inhaling all of this, besides the rodents, the abandoned houses. When the recycle plant went in, we were not aware that that was coming in. Now they want to bring more trash in for the people who live closer than me. This is a disgrace. This is telling us that we are not worth anything. So I ask you to please vote for this rezoning and help our future generations. I'm going to be 75 years old in January. I hope to live longer, but at this pace, if our quality air has changed in three years, three years, I'm not going to be here. How many of these other people in Hazelwood are not going to be here? What is that saying to our generations? Our generations are not going to make it either down there. We have a long history of a lot of people who lived there all our life. We've chose to stay in our community, hoping it would come back up after the mills closed, but we do not need a trash dump.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
My name is Bernie Noon. Kathy took my story.
Okay.
Thanks, Kathy. I live around, I, all my kids were born around a corner from Kathy. You know, when we looked out the window at the third floor, we called it our train set. It was the railroad. It was always there with the railroad. Now it's a terminal, okay? And when Kathy says about the dust in that and the noise, you can actually close your door, go to the other side of your house, and you can still hear the vibration, emptying the trucks, okay?
Yes.
I can't believe you would let them start dumping raw garbage in Hazelwood, in the city of Pittsburgh. You're going to start dumping raw garbage. You've got to be out of your minds, you know? I ain't saying, hey, people need jobs, but you've got to have respect for the neighbors, okay? You took Langhorn Street. Langhorn Street is 400 feet long. There was trees all the way down it. Four years ago, railroad come in, shh, brought them all down. Took a spur line, took it all the way down Langhorn Street. And what'd they do? They blocked the, they blocked the noise, put a fence up. That's it. So there's no per, how can you do something? Nobody gets a permit. Nobody lets nobody know what they're doing. They just do what they want to do, and we, and we pay the price.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Assuming Ms. Krasinski, is there anybody on line?
Yeah, we got a phone.
Okay. I'm sorry. Will have you come up?
Tiffany, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Tiffany Talton, Hazelwood resident, 510 Glenwood Avenue. I have been in the neighborhood for some years now, used to work with Hazelwood Initiative as the Director of Outreach and Sustainability. Glad to see them there. And one of the things that was really important to the community when I was there was green, was air quality. We worked to help get community residents purple air monitors. We worked to get, you know, the greenway developed. We've planted with our partners, Tree Pittsburgh and everything. While I was there, over 700 trees were planted to help with air quality because that was a major concern to the community. We had meetings with people about gardens. We had meetings with people about the future of the community and what it would mean to have a residential neighborhood and what they would be doing after all of the industry from the steel mills. And one of the things that came up in one of those environmental meetings was that they wanted to have better access to their relatives over in Swissvale, over in Homestead, over in Rankin, over in Braddock, and this idea of reconnecting Hazelwood through the bike trail, nine-mile run and all that, it was really important. And so we've been working, you know, even though I don't work for Hazelwood Initiative anymore, I'm still a resident and still very much invested in the development of this bike trail and reconnecting communities. My own family is also over in Braddock and in Swissvale. And the idea that we are going to have even more trash coming into the community, a community that I have personally invested in by buying my house here, is just really upsetting. I don't even have to rake because the winds are so strong and trash is just I don't even have to rake because the winds are so strong and trash is just coming into my yard over on Glenwood Ave. We don't need to have more trash in this community. We don't need to have more noise in this community. We don't need to have even worse air quality in this community with more development of industry down there. You know, I'm lucky that I'm closer to the Greenway and yet I still have air quality problems here. I still have trash problems. I am a person that is sound sensitive. I am sensitive to people, you know, that are suffering of other disabilities, whether it's asthma or ADHD or autism. My own, I'm now on an inhaler since moving to Hazelwood. I never had an inhaler before in all the other decades of my life. So there is something here. I wear a mask a lot of times outside, walking along Second Avenue because the air quality is so poor there with all of the traffic. And I used to walk actually behind Second Avenue on Langhorn because they had these beautiful maple trees and it was shaded, it was cooler, it was quiet. And then a few years ago, they just disappeared all of a sudden. So I'm also very frustrated by that, that the community wasn't notified and that it just took away one more barrier from the sound. The sound that you can hear, the trains, the trucks, 3:00 in the morning, 3:30 in the morning and the 5:00 in the morning, the air quality starts getting worse again. We need to rezone this area. I really appreciate the work that Barb Warwick has done to bring this up and to protect our community. And I hope that the other council people and the city of Pittsburgh will do more to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there someone else online?
Yes. Anne, you can now provide testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Anne Quinn. I am a resident in the neighborhood of Greenfield. My address is 753 McCaslin Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15217. But I also am the Director of a nonprofit, fiscally sponsored program that is called the Mon Water Project. I am here to speak on the impact to our rivers in addition to the compounded interest of all of the impacts you have already heard. So layering on top of the noise, laying on top of the air quality, layering on top of all of these other impacts that the residents here are describing in detail. I would like to also add the water quality issues that are associated with heavy industry and how the Mon has already foot the bill for the pollution of our region for too long. It is a river that is in the process of recovery, but it will not recover if we continue to have industry along its banks. I feel as though the city of Pittsburgh, we have learned our lesson, that our rivers are something that we must live beside and coexist with. If we continue to try to control them and pollute them, we are polluting ourselves. We are polluting our communities and we are polluting the ability for us to create lasting relationships with the river in a way that grows and develops our communities. Please consider Barb Warwick's slides and information about how other areas of the city have embraced and developed their river fronts to be the prize and opportunity for access to rivers for all of those residents. Right now, if you were to stand in the neighborhood of Hazelwood, you are not able to walk to a river to touch it. A riverside community who does not have river access, right? You are eliminating the ability for that river and that community to be connected. This rezoning would be an opportunity for light development as well as residents to possibly be connected to their river again. That is what allows us to then partner and move forward, appreciate the river for what it can and can't do, and also protect us from the flooding and allow us to also consider the riparian buffer of the river along that area. So on behalf of the Mon Water Project, I stand with the residents of Hazelwood. I stand with the partner nonprofits in the room. I stand with the council member Warwick in this recommendation.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there additional testimony? Okay, is there anyone else in the room? My apologies, we should have had you speak right after the council. All right.
Thank you, sir. My name is Bill Sitig, S-I-T-T-I-G, and I represent CSX Transportation. And with me as before is Rodney Oglesby. He's the Director of State Affairs for CSX. So he's involved in these kinds of community settings regularly. So I've had to learn a lot here too, as Commissioner O'Neill stated. Turns out that I was wrong with my assessment as she had that initial assessment to say, well, there's lots of rail that's zoned this way. There's a big distinction. This is a rail yard. Obviously, if you have a rail line, CSX isn't worried about getting a zoning permit. Nobody would even think to get a zoning permit, but in a rail yard, when you need other permits, then as Mr. Lehman said, as a result of this, he would process this under this ordinance. That's a problem. I think Ms. O'Neill, if she would look at the law, and I provided the board this, a prudent lawyer would agree it's a problem, just as a matter of law. And I know I'm here as a lawyer. In a bigger sense for CSX, and we met with Reverend Murray and we met with Sonia Tillman, it remains, and I told the councilwoman, one of the good things that came out of this is that we're at the table. Now unfortunately, being at the table, we initiated this, but there's been no follow-up. I hear them, we hear them, we hear things that have nothing to do with us, CSX, like the transfer station or the waste transfer facility. But there are things that may have to do with us, which are lighting, which are dust, which we may be able to, and the biggest thing of all, I think, long-term is riverfront access. Those are things that my client has historically been cooperative, cooperated with, with the communities and would like to do that. We don't think this adversarial and very misplaced adversarial process is helpful. We didn't come here to fight. We don't want to fight. We're given no choice. Anybody that, just like the neighbors, if somebody came to you and said, we're going to take your property and move you out, I would hope that you had a lawyer or the government would hire a lawyer or there'd be a solicitor defending your rights. I've been told, we've been told here on the record, they're trying to get rid of us. They're trying to zone us out. That's a problem. It's a fundamental problem because that's not what zoning should ever be used for. It's a particular problem whenever you deal with railroads. I don't know why the legislation was there. We always know that there's a broad scope. Now I'm a little bit more informed on it since I've been paid to learn it, which is the greatest part of my job. My clients pay me to learn, but it's broad. I mean, we all know it's broad. It's extremely broad. So I just gave you the letter and I'll just point to a couple of passages on the second page. It's, these are quotes from cases. This is like district court cases. These are very high level cases. "It's difficult to imagine a broader concept of Congress's intent to preempt state regulatory authority over railroad operations." And that's referencing what's known as the ICCTA, the Interstate Commerce Commission Termination Act. So it's, the court stated when reviewing this, "It's difficult to imagine a broader set of rights." That's the framework we're all working from. That's actually what I have to get my client off of to even extend itself beyond that broad protection, to look out with our neighbors and to engage because the overall legal framework is massively, massively protective. Another quote there is, "State or local permitting or pre-clearance requirements, including zoning ordinances, are preempted." Now that sounds like, and it's the same thing, and I assume Commissioner O'Neill is the lawyer saying, okay, well, if you're preempted, I asked my own client, what's the problem? Well, the problem is, is that Mr. Lehman, his zoning administrator, he's charged with administering it. And he stated in his testimony that there'd be a special exception. I can assure you, railroads don't go through special exception processes. You've never seen it. Many of you, you sit on the board, Madam Chair, and the railroad's not coming to ask you to do a rail yard.
No.
So what is preempted, and this is really why we're here today, is the permitting process itself. So there's no process. And this is just zoning. It's not that there aren't these other, there's light and air and there's all these other. The only thing that's really targeted here is zoning and it's so clear. It's disappointing that we're still here because now, when the Hazelwood community had very productive meetings and now I have these folks that I should be in a collaborative meeting in a neighborhood setting to say, what can we do? And now, you know, I'm here, the big bad guy, he's the lawyer. That's unfortunate that it's cast this way, but that was chosen politically to do it that way. It won't stop me. You folks know me. I'll still sit with all you folks and try to address your concerns as best I can. But I would say that by making this ordinance pending, that is going to trigger action. So Mr. Mazza started off today and I would strongly suggest either that you recommend that this ordinance go up minus the railroad properties. It's 84% of the property. We understand, we heard from one resident, her property's zoned industrial. We heard about the transfer station. That's not why we're really here today. That's not why CSX is here today. We're here because there's this directly stated, I mean, this is a goldmine for a litigator, frankly, this is transcript. But if it goes up, it's going to trigger it because it's pending. So if an operation comes up and you recommend it today, then Mr. Lehman has to process it legally to say, it's pending and you have to apply for it. And for example, he may say, go get a special exception. My client is not inclined to submit to that. And I'm not threatening to do anything, but it's unacceptable. I would say, I would recommend to either recommend it to go forth and eliminate the railroad properties, which we provided and will provide if necessary, or that you have the executive session, because I think, and I spoke with Mr. Miller and I won't characterize any of his comments, he can speak for itself, but I think a thoughtful lawyer would give you good advice and Mr. Miller certainly in that camp.
Well, thank you. And I don't want you to leave. And you may have heard me say to Mr. Sitig, I should have had him go immediately following Councilwoman Warwick, primarily because I wanted to, it would have been nice for you all to have heard what he said as you were kind of giving your testimony. Mr. Lehman, are you wanting to say something? Oh, okay. Well, then I'll be quiet and let you say something first. No, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I need to object to the characterization of my testimony, which wasn't, which was given in response to a question from a planning commissioner and then taken in part to suggest that I would apply some standard additional beyond what the railroad is preempted from now. That is, I just want to say unequivocally on the record, that is not the case. The zoning code treats, has levels of permission permitted by right, special exception, conditional use, all three are permitted uses. And then the process for that is prescribed for the zoning code, which I am required to administer. But there is nothing that regarding either level of that that would stand in the way from the railroad asserting their preemption. And to my understanding, there hasn't been a problem. The code exists currently for GI that requires permits. So there's not a problem now. There wouldn't be a problem in the IMU or there wouldn't be a change in the IMU in terms of the city's relationship there. I just want to make that clear.
Well, I appreciate you wanting to make, provide some clarity. I don't necessarily know that if that was kind of what was, I must have missed something, but definitely appreciate the clarity. You know, commissioners, at this time, you know, we've heard all the public testimony and we should have some, I'm sorry, sir? Okay. Were you, you weren't in line to? Okay. Well, then I'm not going to not allow you, but are you, are you all standing in the rear for testimony as well or just, really? Okay, well, I'm going to have to let you give testimony. So please do, please state your name, address, and then give us your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies. My name is Brendan O'Donnell. First name B-R-E-N-D-A-N, last name O'Donnell, O apostrophe capital D-O-N-N-E-L-L. I'm an attorney for Allegheny Valley Railroad. My address is 401 Liberty Avenue, Pittsburgh 15222. My client operates the Glenwood Yard. The Glenwood Yard has been there since the late 1800s. My client would be the party whose property interests would be the most impacted within the area that is subject to the rezoning because of the size of the Glenwood Yard. This is not a situation that was alluded to several times where this is merely railroad tracks passing through a community or passing through a zoning district. The aerial images were shown that present the size of this railroad yard. Because it is a railroad yard, it is not merely tracks. Despite the commentary that has been made that there is preemption, there are the railroads, it doesn't matter to the railroads. Unfortunately, what I have heard here and in prior public hearings, including from the materials that have been presented in furtherance of this draft legislation, is a clear desire to eliminate my client's use from this property. This use has been here for over a century. And so we have a difficult time on one hand, hearing, well, there's railroad preemption, we can't do anything. And then this process continues, it continues, and statements are made of wish we could get rid of the uses that are there. My client has invested substantially into the Glenwood Yard, has upgraded facilities there, and we are certainly willing to listen to and want to be a good neighbor to the community. So if there are issues with air, there's issues with light, things of that nature as Mr. Sitig from CSX indicated, we certainly are open to meetings with the community to deal with that in a collaborative fashion. However, this is a zoning ordinance related to the zoning of this property. And this is a situation where unfortunately, the reality is that for residents of the community, my client can't go anywhere either because rail yards need large, flat areas of which there are not many in this region. And to my knowledge, this is the only rail yard in the city limits itself. So we have made investments. We want to be a good neighbor, but we cannot sit idly by with proposed legislation, which the vast majority of the property impact is going to be on my client. And it eliminates our ability to focus on aspects of connection to the river, trails, working with CSX and community groups when our rights are under attack here. My recommendation, as Mr. Sitig had indicated, is that before the planning commission would take any action, to confer with the city law department to evaluate what the impact is of federal preemption of railroads before the city take, before the planning commission takes any further action, and also to evaluate the timelines associated with this. I know that the city council passed a resolution authorizing an extension of time for a consideration. However, I do have questions and concerns associated with whether that was timely or a deemed denial of this has resulted anyway. So with that, I echo the comments of CSX and request that the planning commission deliberate with the city law department before taking any action in favor of a recommendation of the planned or the proposed zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And I want to just apologize. Please step forward to get to the mic because I had put it out there a few times, if there was additional testimony, and I'm sorry that we've missed this many in giving testimony.
Hi, my name is Frank Chimer, C-H-I-M-E-R-A. We're here representing Republic Services. We had submitted a presentation. Was that, were we able to bring that up? Thank you. Again, my name is Frank Chimer. We operate the recycling center at 50 Vespucius Street in the Hazelwood neighborhood. Myself, our Market General Manager, Lori Kolchinsky, and our Operations Manager, Mark Duncan, the three of us are here to speak to you all about who we are, Republic Services, and what we've accomplished since taking over ownership of the recycling center in February of this year.
So is this, and forgive me, but is this going to be roughly a brief testimony? Okay.
Yep, very brief.
Okay, I just want to have clarity.
Sure thing. Republic is a leader in the environmental services industry. Our commitments to our people and the communities in which we serve are a large part of how we deliver on our vision to create a more sustainable world. As you can see from the information highlighted on this slide, we are an industry-leading, safety and compliance-focused organization, providing an essential service. A large part of how we meet the needs of our customers and communities is through the 75 recycling centers that we own and operate around the country, like the one here in the Hazelwood community. These recycling centers process around 6.4 million tons of recycling. These recycling centers process around 6.4 million tons of recycling annually. We're responsible for handling a large portion of the recycling generated across the country. Here in Pittsburgh, we are the sole processor for all of the city's residential recycling and much of its commercially-generated recycling as well. This is a responsibility that we do not take lightly. We have a laser focus on operating safely and compliantly at all of our facilities to protect our people and the communities that we serve. Republic Services is proud to have been recognized by many leading organizations for our focus on operating safely and ethically, for being forward-thinking, and for being people and compliance-focused. These awards are given for the work that our people do every day in local communities across the country, just like here in Hazelwood. To talk more specifically about our operations here in Pittsburgh, we employ 146 people in the greater Pittsburgh area. We collect and handle a large portion of the recycling and trash generated in the greater Pittsburgh area and process 37,000 annual tons at our recycling center in Hazelwood. We responsibly and safely provide this essential service to greater Pittsburgh community. As I mentioned earlier, we took over ownership of this facility just this year, back in February. Since then, we've invested $2.8 million in revitalizing the site to bring the facility up to our operating standards, with another $1.4 million in investment planned for 2026. We've cleaned up the property, we've installed new perimeter fencing, we've stepped up road and elimination, installed new garage doors, and now store all material inside the building. This facility not only provides responsible handling of the city's recycling, it provides jobs to Pittsburgh residents, and is also a revenue generator for the city. So far in 2025, the city of Pittsburgh has received just under $100,000 in revenue generated from the recycling contract that they have with Republic at this facility for us processing and marketing and selling the recyclables generated within the city. Now I'd like to turn it over to our Pittsburgh general manager, Lori Kolchinsky, to cover the improvements and our commitment to the community in more detail.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Lori Kolchinsky. I am the general manager for BFI Waste Services of Pennsylvania, which is a subsidiary of Republic Services in the Pittsburgh market. And I have a whole bunch of stuff written down. We've done this a couple times. You know, since we took over in February, you know, I understand the history at this location, and I understand what it did to the community. It is my commitment to make this a better facility, something that the community can be proud of. If you look at these pictures here, on the left is a picture of what it looked like about a year ago. The middle picture is what it looked like when we took over, and then to the right is after a couple months of our ownership. You know, it is, it's frustrating to hear that it's no better now than what it was in the past. And I know even from the previous owners, prior to the ones that we purchased this from, the owner before that, they went bankrupt. They just shut up shop and left everything there for the community to deal with for months until it was cleaned up. Republic Service owns this now. Republic Service isn't gonna go bankrupt. Nobody's gonna leave this community holding the bag again. Republic Services is the best company to own this facility, to operate it the right way. And this is just some snapshots of, of showing you, and we're not done yet. This is only what we could accomplish in a couple months. We're not done. We have a lot, a lot more to go. So again, here, left side is under previous ownership, right side is after Republic owned it for a couple of months. And again, we're, we're not done. We've only been able to get garage doors on two sides of the building. We did the front side of the building when you come in, you know, to our front entrance and, and the rail side, and we just picked those sides because, again, we only have so much time, and that's where we felt the wind was coming from the most and would have the best impact on the facility. Oh, this picture here, I just want you to know, like, we are providing jobs for the, for the community. We have a number of individual Hazelwood residents that work at this facility. This is what, on the pictures on the left, this is what this facility looked like when we took over in February. To the right is what it looks like under Republic Services standards. We will run this facility the right way, and it will be something that nothing will brought, be brought into this facility without community input and making sure that you guys are comfortable with the way that things are being operated. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and I, and I wanna say, I wasn't trying to necessarily rush. Please come on up. Your presentation at all, I just wanted some clarity so that people knew, and I appreciate you being able to give a presentation and show sort of before and after.
My name is Mark Duncan, and I'm the operations manager. I heard of a few people talk about things are the same down there. I've been there for 10 years. I was there with the old administration. And you people that live down by the railroad tracks, I know you can remember when, when the material used to almost touch the fence. I mean, it used to blow over the fence and all of that. The back was the same way, the front was the same way. So that's why I'm here to tell you there has changed, there is a difference. All our material is kept in the building now. That smell, I'm going back there when I leave here. If you wanna come, you ain't gonna smell nothing. I'm going back there right after this. All the material is left in the building. But when was the prior organization? I did smell it. You could smell it on Second Avenue and all of that, because all that material was by the fence. Right now, you will not smell that, um, none of that stuff over there. Well, like she said, the doors are put up on the one side where the wind blows in, and that's helping keeping everything concentrated inside. You seen the pictures, there's no garbage outside on the fence line, none on the road, none of that. It is clean. This company has came in and cleaned that up that quick. And let me tell you, they're not gonna stop there. Any concerns you got, they're gonna handle it, just the way they handled this right here. I had opportunities, but I stayed, and I ain't going nowhere. Like I said, I've been there over 10 years. And then I'm the young man, you said, I was his boss. I don't remember who he is, but he must have been there when it was our recycle source, when Gabe owned it. It was terrible. You seen those break room pictures? You seen the before and after? My guys go in there now, and they just start cleaning up on their own. They appreciate what was done there. I appreciate what was done there. So to say that the place has not changed, that is not true. Like I said, I'm going back there. You wanna come smell, you can come smell.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, my name is Jesse Zirillo, Z I R I L L O. I'm an attorney, and I represent BFI Waste and Republic. Just wanna say that we strongly oppose this proposed zoning change outlined today. We ask that the zoning commission vote down this proposal, or at a minimum, conduct an executive session with the city's law department. I agree with most of the statements made by Allegheny Valley Railroad and CSX. And I would like to put on the record that once again, my client did not receive adequate notice. Postcards were referenced earlier on, we did not receive one. The property subject to this zoning change is 84% railroad. As was stated at length, railroads are federally preempted. Therefore, the stated purposes, both environmental and economic, that are being proposed would be essentially unfeasible. Councilwoman Warwick admitted at previous hearings that the recycling facility was the driving force behind this proposed change in the zoning. Furthermore, today's briefing on the text amendment showcases that our facility is the actual target of these proceedings. Because of this singling out of BFI and its facilities, this proposed zoning change is tantamount to illegal spot zoning. As for using the property for a transfer station, the current case law permits modification of current use to be grandfathered in when said use was consistent with the type of use previously utilized by the property. Lastly, there is neighboring property that is also zoned GI. Said GI property is adjacent to a much more substantially high-density residential area. In closing, this proposed zoning change would undermine decades of city planning that decided long ago that these properties would be designated and best suited for general industrial uses, like the valuable services that my client provides to the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, so, and, oh, okay, come on.
Hello, my name is Denise Johnson. I live at 5309 Gertrude Street, and I'm here today because I can't sit on my porch without the fumes from the trash, from the dump. Maybe he's immune to it because he works there, and you don't, you can't smell it. But I say, come, come move to our neighborhood, and you'll be able to smell it. And the rodents that's coming, it's ridiculous. My little grandson just got diagnosed with asthma. I've been living there seven years, and it's ridiculous. Like I said, if you don't live there 24/7, you wouldn't know, because you're gonna go, you're immune to the odor. I mean, I got, I can say more, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Sorry, pardon me. I just have a letter from the Hosanna House that I'd like to present.
Okay.
Can I present it to you? Thank you.
Please. And thank you. All right. So typically, I wait for fellow commissioners to say something, and I am going to defer to commission, but I, I will say before I hand it over that while notice was definitely an issue the last time we were here, and, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Mazza, although we needed to get some testimony out today, no matter what. I had been hopeful that with notice and with communication with all parties, you know, sitting down and having some conversation, that that dialogue would happen. Because on the residential side, there's recognition and acknowledgement and acceptance that there are some negative impacts, absolutely. But then on the other side, you see that there are businesses that are, and companies and corporations that are in the room that are saying, we're making some improvements, we may be new to this, and that more dialogue was desired. And, and Councilwoman Warwick, I, I don't know, and maybe you can answer this for me, was there, it sounds like there had been some conversation, but not really enough conversation to really work through, because here, here's the conundrum. The things that are there now are not going to be put out. So they're going to stay. And if residents are bothered with the way that things are, them not leaving isn't a resolution. While there are other things that may be able to happen, there are still things that could remain the same. And so I like to, to look at things from a, you know, if you're having conversation with what you perceive to be an opponent, and you can find some common ground, then you move forward collectively is kind of how I, I, I like to see things, and I, and that doesn't mean the way that I, I'm seeing them is right. That just means that I, I feel like there might be some confusion that if something changes as it relates to zoning, that some of the activity and behavior stops or goes away altogether. And that's not, that's not accurate. And I think that you've been clear about that, but I, but I don't necessarily, I'm concerned about there not being a dots connected to that. And now we're, we're trying to push something forward without making sure that there's peace and, what word do I wanna use? Maybe, maybe there is tree lining, maybe there, those things will need to happen regardless of what the future looks like in terms of zoning. So I, I almost feel that it's, it's my initial thought, and of course, commission will need to, to speak on this as well, but my initial thought is that more communication needs to happen, and I kinda thought that was gonna occur before getting back today. Please, please. And, and, you know, I, I don't want to, nor do I feel comfortable with there, there being this sort of thought that, that if there's acute trauma perceived, and that acute trauma will not disappear, then what?
So I think that when we're talking about the zoning, I think it's important to remember, we've heard a lot from the various companies, right? And specifically, if you wanna use the recycling center as an example, right? Two owners ago was a terrible owner, right? They just went bankrupt and they left everything all over the place. The last owner was also a terrible neighbor, right? And now we have Republic Services, a new owner, and they, well, the previous owner, as, as, as we've discussed, right? Totally under the radar, with zero community input, got a permit to put a waste transfer station into this facility, right? Totally on, zero, zero outreach to anybody in this room. Republic Services has made it abundantly clear that at some point in time, they would like to do that, but they never made that clear to the community. They never did any outreach. That was just something they were gonna do. And the only reason, and again, I welcome the fact that, and we have sat down, right? We took a tour of the plant, you know, we saw, you know, well, I've showed some photos that I took just a couple days ago, so just so everyone's clear on what the plant looks like now, right? You know, at this point in time, as the city, we're just talking about trust. But trust doesn't get you, trust doesn't protect this community from future harm, right? The county health department needs to step up. And I'd say the city, I don't know, I actually don't know, and it's something I, I will certainly look into with PLI, et cetera, like, what can the rail yard do in terms of just flooding people's homes with light? Because I cannot believe that the folks here in this room have never heard these concerns. I cannot believe it's in the greater Hazelwood neighborhood plan, these issues, back from 2019. So while folks have come to the table, and I did get a phone call, but I didn't ever get a meeting request, there was, I believe, a meeting with Hazelwood Initiative. I did get a phone call from, from Bill, where we talked a little, but, you know, there was never any, like, real effort to reach out, sit down. It was just sort of like, we're gonna sue you if you do this. And that does not feel like outreach to me.
And, and I would concur.
Yeah.
But I, I, you know, I'm a lover. I don't, I, I don't necessarily want to see war. And if there's war, then of course there's no conversation. The expectation, my personal expectation was notice was an issue and conversation was an issue. And I, even as you're, you're sort of sharing, yes, there might not have been communication prior, and trust is absolutely an issue. Trust has to start somewhere, and this moving forward doesn't change what's already there. It, it doesn't change that. And that, and that's not to say, don't, don't go for change. I think I just, I, I would rather see, even beyond executive session, where there's just a decision made, and somebody's mad and somebody's happy, I would rather see communication be very, very different in this matter. Because if what I'm hearing from both sides is true, and if it's not, then we just come right back here. But I don't think the communication, people haven't rolled up their sleeves, haven't gotten the trenches, and both sides kind of seeing the issues.
I mean, we-
I'm, I'm asking if that is something that is possible, if I have to get in the trenches with everybody personally and then come back to this table and recuse. I would like to see that occur before we just look at some decision-making, you know, because there's, there's two sides to, to this. And if people want to do right, and that doesn't mean you can't still do the same thing, there's no, no reason that that trigger couldn't be pulled at any time. But I, but I think that peace, rather than war, might be the move, and there might be more mileage out of that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if, like, war and peace, I think it's protecting communities versus not, right? It's, this is the first time this city has taken any step whatsoever to protect this community from the industrial activity that has been going on for decades.
And that is a fight. And that is, you know, and- And that is, you know, and it's semantics, whatever, you know, however, we, you know, sort of gift wrap it. But I, you know, I again, uh, my general thoughts are I would feel most comfortable if that was, because there's nothing to be lost, right? But everything to be gained because you can still do this tomorrow or the day after, or that, you, you, you understand what I mean? I, and, and that doesn't mean that's where we are. I am not the line, I, I don't draw the line here. But I just want you to know that those are my thoughts and those are my feelings. That's to everybody in the room. Because what you're, what you're after is, is change. You're after behavior and activity being very different than what it is present day. And if what I'm hearing sounds like activity and behavior can change, you can still do this and that, right? Um, but I'm going to sort of throw it over to commissioners, uh, unless you wanted to say something, councilwoman in addition. No? And, and you can hang out there. Maybe one of the commissioners might have a, uh, an additional question or two.
What I would, what I would say is we continue to play the blame game. Nobody's going to win here. It's, there's a lot of unanswered questions and I, I believe in the community and what could be done. I believe in collaboration. If we can't get to that point, it is a fight. And if one side's going to be on one side, if the other side's going to be on the other side, then who's going to win? Nobody. The kids aren't going to win. Community's not going to win. You know, you don't, we don't want a government entity to come in here and say, this is how it's going to be. Push something through before we really have to. I honestly think more collaboration needs to be done with the railroads and the community. Okay. If those trees, tree line was knocked down, why can't we plant new trees? Why can't we go out there? Why can't we get community, I'll go out and help you plant the trees? Why can't we all work together to get this thing done and fixed right before, excuse me?
We've done that.
Okay. Well, then I understand that, but we have to do something to try to work together. Otherwise we're not going to have the ability to work together any, again. And I don't know what all the answers are either.
I, I, and I'm not sure what that is.
I mean, the, the whole thing started with me was because there wasn't any collaboration between the attorneys and you know, the city or however that went down, I don't know. But that, that's the issue there. That's why I asked that question in the beginning. Okay. So until that decision would, would be rendered, then it's hard for me to move forward with this and have the ability to, you know, make this thing right. I, you know, it's, it's, it's a very difficult position because we shouldn't put ourselves in a position of failure. We should try to work together.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Mazza.
So I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm very appreciative of everyone who came to.
Yeah, no doubt about that.
Yes, very much so.
And for the councilwoman to cite, you know, specific.
Absolutely.
Portions of the greater Hazelwood neighborhood plan. I think that's very important as, uh, you know, um, the purpose of those plans is, is basically to, to guide the, the neighborhood for the next 10, 20 years, whatever. Um, yeah, I mean, all the photos that, you know, that you put in that showed the, the proximity of homes, the recycling facility or, um, you know, just the fences, the lights, et cetera. Um, the respiratory issues, I heard a lot about that. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think the, the RIVIMU is kind of, I, I would, I would hope it's, you know, kind of like more of a, uh, I don't want to say compromise. I, I use that word a lot, but it is kind of a compromise because, you know, the, the RIVIMU is not going to force, force out any property owners or any, any zoning designation is not going to force any property owners that are already there. And, you know, in terms of plant commission's role, our role is not to eliminate uses. We're, you know, um, councilwoman, the members of the public, they don't speak on behalf of the plant commissioner or department of city planning in terms of what, what, uh, you know, what is appropriate use for, for an area, um, part of a community. So, um, you know, any talk about, um, you know, folks trying to push, push someone out or push, you know, uh, or force someone out of an area, that's, that's, that's not plant commission's role. And I don't, I don't think any of us here, um, I, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I, I don't think any of us here are, are trying to, uh, to do that. So, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think having the new zoning designation, what it does is it prevents, as, as someone from the audience said earlier, it prevents, um, an expansion or, um, you know, more of the same type of use. It's, it's not to get rid of the use. Um, and you know, freight, freight terminal, um, that, that's a, that's a use that's conducive to a rail yard. And currently that's permitted in the GI districts and the RIVIMU, it would be a special exception. A special, a special exception does not, you know, it's not defined as an exception to the rule. Special exception is, is a permitted use, but because of its potential impact requires a hearing with the zoning board of adjustments. So, you know, it, it's still permitted use. It, it just has, um, you know, a hearing associated with it. So, um, you know, I, um, and, and as someone else said earlier, the railroad can't assert preemption with zoning. And I think that has been done many times. Um, I mean, related to the, the, the use of a freight terminal, there's many municipalities in Pennsylvania that have it listed as a special exception too. So it's, it's not a permitted use everywhere. Um, and I don't, I don't think anyone would expect a freight terminal to be a permitted use in an R1 district, you know, for single family homes. So, you know, I, I, I think, I think there is a balance between what zoning allows and what, uh, you know, what, what, uh, what is allowed by, uh, any federal law. So, um, I, I would like to see more, uh, from the law department, uh, discussing that. I, I think I echo everyone else, um, you know, on, on that aspect. And, you know, as, as far as impacts, um, is it, is there a bigger impact? Bigger positive impact of putting, uh, RIVIMU zoning across this area or revising the use table at some point to potentially permit, um, you know, recycling facility as a special exception or whatever? I would argue that, that, you know, having the RIVIMU has a bigger positive impact. You know, changes to the, changes to the zoning code can always be made. Um, you're, you're briefing earlier, uh, councilwoman about, um, separating the, the definition of waste transfer facility and recycling. I, I didn't really understand why that was coming up earlier, but, um, you know, if, if you do separate that definition, you're able to say, yeah, we don't want, uh, we don't want, um, trash, but recycling facility might be an option. So, you know, I, I think that legislation that you have might, it could still be in the works. Um, you, I mean, you could be, you could be collaborating with Republic Services or, or anyone else to say, you know, if we, if we, um, if we separate this definition, can we, you know, can we compromise with you? Maybe recycling center or recycling facility is listed as a, as a use in the, a RIVIMU. So, I mean, I, I think there's many conversations left to be had, but, um, I, I mean, I, I think all the testimony here, um, about, uh, you know, folks' daily lives, generations of living in the area, you know, dealing with asthma.
It's real.
Yeah, it's real. Also the greater Hazelwood neighborhood plan that cannot be ignored. And I think you're correct about that.
Thank you. And I don't know that we're saying no to that, but yes to additional conversation. Vice Chair O'Neill?
I believe, uh, Commissioner Blackwell had her hand for you. She's welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't even see her.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to also thank the councilwoman for listening to the community and taking preventing future harm, um, to the community residents. Seriously. I too would have liked to have seen from the facility more information and more response to the concerns that the community had, which were the same last hearing for this hearing. Um, and I understand the concerns of the railroad. But I too believe that with more time, that there could be a compromise. Because this is an opportunity, you know, to set a precedent. Um, and those are my reflections and I yield to Commissioner O'Neill. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell.
Thank you. Uh, because I know we're talking about potentially postponing, I don't.
Might we be able to turn up any, uh, the, the volume? I'm sorry, Vice Chair O'Neill, but the volume's kind of low.
Good job. Sorry.
Much.
Uh, since I know we're talking about continuing, I don't want to launch into all of the legal analysis and, um, you know, spend too much time with this. It, it did seem like the testimony, uh, from the public, which I, I do appreciate and I appreciate everybody's, um, you know, information about their lived experiences and what's going on there. I want to make sure that what we're doing moving forward is addressing that concern. Uh, and because we're not an enforcement board, because this is, you know, a zoning change to regulate, you know, future development and future reuse, um, it doesn't really touch on a lot of the issues that were, um, you know, spoken about. It may be as effectively as some sort of settlement or community benefits agreement. And I know I'm facing the camera and seeing, um, you know, Chair Burton Falk, not that councilwoman, but you know, I think this is an opportunity, um, to use this legislation as leverage to negotiate something like that and, you know, put guardrails on or talk about guardrails with, um, you know, the businesses that are here. Um, you know, because they seem to be willing to discuss, you know, how their operations are working. And, you know, maybe there is some room for a limit on noise, a limit on hours. Because I honestly would be ready to vote for this. I'm, I have no issue with that, but I think that, um, you know, we may be able to get some legislation through and also, you know, some concessions from some of these industrial businesses that have been there and are not going away. Um, that's not within this board's power. But it does, you know, allow for the evolution of this area as a more residential friendly, um, you know, district. So I guess I'd just like to see, and I, I'm sorry, I think we're talking a little bit, Councilwoman Warwick. I would be putting this to you. Do you want us to go to a vote today? Or do you want some time to try and negotiate some sort of agreement like that?
I would prefer a vote today because the reality is, and I am absolutely open to sitting down and talking about better fencing and better, you know, and reductions in the light and all of these things. I'm more than happy to do that. However, we all know in this room, everyone in this room knows that they're, the future intentions of at least some of the property owners in this zone are to introduce, we know, are to introduce more harmful facilities to the community. And that is not going to change. That, and so, you know, that is, that is ultimately what the core issue is. And I, I really would like to say that, um, I'm, I'm not a fan of the notion that this community who've all come out today and who've been experiencing all of this in order to, um, that, that the, the power of this city to protect its residents should, should hinge upon, you know, our fear that the, um, industrial neighbors in this community might not make the changes that they know they should make. Changes that they should have made years and years ago. And that we're sort of, you know, and I, I am, I don't feel that I am threat. I mean, we, and we know, right? We've heard from Commissioner Wu, there, there is no threat to any existing facilities, right? That are, that are currently operating as, as very bad neighbors at this point, right? And so, yeah, I would like the commission to move forward because I think that, again, the rezone, and I cannot stress this enough, this rezone is to protect this community for the future, right? As far as what to do, as far as sitting down, I'm glad. I, 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 I hope that CSX is at the table for the long run. And that, you know, this isn't just like, well, we'll make improvements, but only if you don't do this thing that we don't want you to do. You know what I mean? Only if you don't, but, but you understand. So I am open to the negotiations. I want to sit down. I want to find out how we can, how our, our industrial, um, businesses can be better neighbors to the community. Um, I think that's overdue, but, um, but I don't think that, that that conversation justifies not doing the thing that we know would improve the situation for the long term. Us, us as, as the commission and then after that as city council.
So, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, um, that I, that's a little bit disappointing, but that is completely your decision. Yeah. Um, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah. So I would, I encourage, um, you know, continued discussions, but I will say with the information that's presented, I'm in favor of moving this forward and keeping it moving. To some of the comments regarding the law is a fun, uh, law school exercise looking at this. But just to be clear, you know, Councilwoman Warwick presented, uh, you know, substantial information in the community, presented substantial information that there's a rational basis for this rezoning that would improve the health, safety and welfare of the community in the future. That is all that is needed within, uh, planning commission and ultimately city council. Um, you know, to move forward with legislation is that there is some sort of rational basis tied to promote health, safety or welfare. As Commissioner Wu said, you know, statements of the public are not statements of the commission. That said, uh, you know, the, uh, emotional or purpose behind an ordinance isn't necessarily something that the courts take into account. Uh, you know, where there is that rational basis. And I think there's more than sufficient evidence for it. You know, this is an area that is adjacent to, uh, single family districts, two parks. Uh, so this less intense use, um, makes sense moving forward. It is rational and, uh, you know, otherwise lawful. Just a few comments regarding, you know, some of these industrial uses. This isn't targeting a single use. There are over 40 parcels under a variety of owner entities. Um, it's not targeting a single use. And as has been said multiple times, any lawful use is permitted to continue as a legal non-conforming use. The city, uh, zoning code already permits expansion of certain law, lawful, non-conforming uses by right. More than that, um, through zoning boards. There are certain utility and railroad uses that are exempt from the zoning code. Just to be clear, uh, you know, there is limited power to zone some of those things. When they are exempt or preempted, um, you know, is something that is mostly for the service transportation board or the public utility commission to decide. And then, you know, it's something for the zoning administrator to evaluate. Um, so merely having with this law on the books, um, is not unlawful. There is not an express preemption within the public utility code. You know, railroads are not monoliths. They are not a single use. They have tracks, they have freight stations, they have lots of different things. And only some of those are, um, you know, preempted. So us putting this out there, um, you know, doesn't run afoul of federal or state law. Um, it really is a case-specific analysis and something that can be directed to the zoning administrator if there is a future application. So just so we're kind of clearing some of the air on that. But I don't think this substantially or detrimentally hurts the existing businesses. Councilwoman Warwick happy to talk about other future uses, um, you know. Councilwoman Warwick, happy to talk about other future uses, you know, we do have some sort of operational standards in the city that should apply to these uses, that, you know, existing buildings throughout the city should be complying with. If there are higher standards that can be addressed, you know, that's also something we could discuss as future legislation. But based on all of that, and thank you for coming to my TED Talk, I would be in favor of this.
Okay, so where are we?
So is that a motion, Commissioner O'Neill?
If there's no additional comment, I would motion to recommend approval as.
And I was second.
Provided in our report.
Commissioner Dick, did you want to vote, or did you have something you wanted to Oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're on mute if you're talking.
Now, would you accept a condition to that motion, that, that we highly recommend negotiations between the citizens and citizens organizations and the existing businesses, which are problematic in the community now, to improve conditions in the future? That we, you know, we would vote for.
I would absolutely encourage that and be happy to amend my motion.
Okay, then I would put that amendment on it, okay?
Okay. Is there, is there any further discussion, or is there any other motion that would like to be put forth?
I would like to make a motion to hold this for more conversation, to get the community benefits agreement, or whatever you want to work on together before we put this thing forward, because if something does happen, we can't unring the bell here. So that's my motion, is to hold it for community. That's.
I think, I think.
You can't do a motion.
Commissioner Mazza, we would have to vote on the motion that's on the floor first.
I know that, but that's.
The upper down, yeah.
I understand that, but if, if there was to make a motion, that's what I would say. So.
Whoops, that was.
A motion was made.
I understand, the motion's on the floor.
Right.
I got that.
That was my fault.
Yeah, that's.
That was my fault.
That's no problem.
Sorry.
That's my fault, excuse me.
Okay, so a motion was made, a second. Now we'll call for vote.
And this is Commissioner O'Neill's motion with Commissioner Blackwell's second.
With.
This was the amended.
A second, the amended.
Yes.
Correct, and I'm not going to read through what that was.
With the conditions, yeah.
Okay. Motion, second. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk? No. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kentony, I think we might have lost him.
Did we lose him?
And Commissioner, I think so. I'm not seeing his square. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
All right. I think the ayes have it. Yes. I think the ayes have it. Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Oh, whoops, I still have to wrap this up. My apologies. Okay, everyone, that ends the hearing and action portion. We'll move to agenda item E, which is the director's report.
There is none.
Thank you. All right, a motion to adjourn? There's no direct, I'm sorry, you can't hear? There is no director's report. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Happy evening, everyone.
Good night, commissioners.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.